All right, I see we're at the top of the hour. We have our membership here. So I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. To the Wakefield Board of Appeals Meeting for January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll start by calling the meeting to order and taking attendance by roll call. So Chip Darbell.
Here.
Kevin Payne.
Here.
Amy Wall.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Lucy.
Right here.
Mike McIntosh. I know you're here.
Here.
Thank you. Mike Feely.
Here.
Thank you. All right. Great. Sharing, I was sharing the agenda. There we go. All right, we'll proceed through the reading of the legal notice. So Amy, if you please.
Insistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than ten people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number. One, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, eight, one, eight, five, four, six, four, zero, four, four. Passcode, seven, seven, eight, nine, five, zero. Please only use dial-in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-one dash twenty-eight, Town of Wakefield Albion Cultural Exchange. Application for a special permit under Article. Sixteen, Sections one ninety through ninety, one ninety dash ninety-nine and one ninety dash a hundred of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. To allow a projecting bracket sign, the property is shown as map twelve lot parcels one thirty-four C of the assessors map. It is located at nine dash eleven Albion Street. Three, twenty-one dash twenty-nine, twenty-one dash thirty, twenty-one dash thirty-one, M Bar Wakefield LLC. Application for a special permit and site plan approval under Article four, Section one ninety dash twenty-three. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow for a drive-in bank on the premises. Application for a special permit under Article seven, Section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow for reductions. In the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading related to the proposed bank use. Application for a special permit under Article seven, Section one ninety dash thirty-seven A. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow off-street parking. Areas to be provided on another lot in the same ownership as the principal use. The property is shown as map eighteen lot parcel six east. Sorry, six C, six E of the assessors map and is located at five hundred Main Street. For twenty-one dash thirty-two, twenty-one dash thirty-three, James F. Hutton and Joan H. Hutton. Application for a determination and or finding with respect to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses. Under Article nine, Section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. To allow in addition onto the existing dwelling. Application for a variance under Article ten, Section one ninety dash sixty-six. From the requirements of Article six and Table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Related to an addition to be constructed on the existing dwelling. The property is shown as map twenty-three lot parcels one thirty-four of the assessors map and is located at one eleven Greenwood Ave, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, so just before we get started again, for anyone as reminders and anyone else who might be relatively new to these Zoom meetings. As Amy said, the meeting is being recorded will be posted on the town's website within several business days after the meeting. As host, I have allowed all the participants to share their screens so different applicants. Can share themselves. During the meeting when the time is right, I've also allowed all of you enabled you to mute and unmute yourself, so I shouldn't have to do that. One thing I did do and we've been doing, I think, across other town board meetings is disabling the chat feature. We need and want all of the discussion to take place in the meeting room and not in sidebar chats. Okay, so that has been disabled. As we would during any public hearing, the applicant will present whatever testimony, plans and information they have to share. We'll discuss it with the board. Ask questions, read any sort of correspondence we have from other town boards. And once we've done that, we would, we would then entertain public testimony. Until that time, I would ask that all members of the public please remain on mute. And when I open it up to public, you can raise your hand in the Zoom app. And I will call on you best I can in the order in which you raise them. And then any votes that we end up taking at the end of any application or meeting will be done by a roll call vote. So with that. We'll get back to our agenda. As Amy said, we have several continued hearings this evening. We've been asked by representing attorneys. If we could take them slightly out of order as listed in the program. And take up one of the continued hearings at the top, and that is case twenty-one dash twenty-seven, Christopher J. Murphy at ten Otis Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's my hearing. Michael McCarthy representing Mr. Murphy, who's here on Zoom, I believe Littlefield is partners as well. This is our second hearing that relates to the property at ten Otis Street. We're looking for a finding. The property is located in a general residence district. Has seventy-five feet of frontage, which is why it's non-conforming, which is why we need the finding. It has over eight thousand square feet, which is conforming. Briefly, because it is our second hearing. My client is proposing to raise the existing non-conforming from a setback standpoint. Single-family home as well as a large garage. And wooden platform behind the garage, which is also non-conforming. From a structural, from a setback standpoint and to construct a two-family house that would be conforming dimensionally and use-wise. I made the point at the last hearing that the, that the proposed use is not only allowed, it's consistent within the neighborhood. The other two residences on the same side of Otis Street. Within the block of Crescent and Pleasant, the two-family homes. To the right, if you look at it from the street, is a forty-eight unit apartment building with a three-unit dwelling behind it, the multi. Unit apartment building, which is more or less across from the fire station. Across from that, and then, of course, across from ten Otis is the senior, the Town of Wakefield Senior Housing Project. So at the last hearing, I think there was some compliments about the design, but there were some concerns about the function. Of the parking as it was proposed to the side of the lot. It was also, I think Amy had asked the question about whether you could, whether we could reduce the footprint of the building. Make a little bit more room for the parking. So we've done both. We promised that we would take a look at everything we have. We've come back and I think Steve from Phoenix Engineering is on, so I'll defer to him in a moment, but. The puzzle now has reduced footprint of the building. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it came back from the front three feet. On the building itself and one foot on the porch. And we have presented two different parking designs. One with the parking in the middle, which is the preference for my client. And then alternative, the other alternative is for parking along the sides. And that's been expanded. Originally, you'll recall, all the parking was proposed on the side. There was concern about some of the width over there, but I think what's been accomplished is. There's more width provided, but still the, the central parking option, the central driveway is the, is the preferred. Option with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to defer to Phoenix, to Steve at Phoenix. He can just touch on the changes quickly or as quickly as you'd like and can move from there.
Okay, and he's.
Steve's on.
And prepared to share. We can share the.
Steve.
Actually, Mike, I'm here. I can, I can.
Okay.
I have it on my screen.
Okay.
Can you all see it?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so the rendering. We, it stays the same as what we did show you before. But by going into the building and taking out depth. Were able to push the building further back on the lot. And it cleared so that the porch is no longer interfere with the parking. This is the option where the four cars are located in the center. There's even space beyond where we thought we maybe could change the paving or do some landscaping just to soften that in that area. But this takes away that issue of being able to open the car doors and get out and take a walkway into the porch. Then we took the same footprint and again showed the parking on the sides, which is, I believe, where we were. At our last meeting, these areas are a paving change, so the walkway would say be like pavers. This could be blacktop. Here we were proposing, we would take the stairs to the porch and push them inboard. That allows more space for this door swing on this car. But everything on the porch could stay the same and entrance into the units can stay the same. Within the units. It's hard to see, but, but it removed three hundred and twenty-five square feet of living space inside each unit, so a total of. Six hundred and fifty square feet in the building. And, and because of able to do it like incrementally, so say like a foot through here, a foot through here, and then a foot through here. It kept the intent of the plans the same. Just making sure, so this lot, for instance, is smaller. These bedrooms each lost a foot in this master bedroom, lost a foot. So I tried to make it so that everything is still functional as far as the plan goes. But again, allowing me to push the building back on the site. So what would be helpful to go back to the site plans?
Sure, I think so.
Okay. So that I can scroll between, but this is the option with the parking to the side. And on this sheet will be the option with parking in the center, which I believe the clients are, are most comfortable with.
And in either one, the, how the structure is pushed back on the lot.
That's correct.
Twenty feet.
Correct. It stays within the setback, but it's able to just push back from the street.
Okay, because I thought we talked before about pushing it back and it was, Mike, I thought you. If we moved it back, we'd need a variance or something, and that brought other things into play.
Well, that's true, but I think what Peter accomplishes is he reduced the depth of the, of the, of the footprint. Of the house, he made it three feet shorter within and one feet on the porch. That allowed the space to move the building back without violating the setback.
Which is twenty in this zone, right?
Right. In the rear.
Yep.
So the building is fully conforming from a setback perspective, actually from every perspective. The only thing that's not conforming is the width of the lot.
Yep. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Yep.
And that's all green space all out front except for the middle strip.
Correct.
Okay. Is it gonna be a, a blacktop or what's it gonna be for that parking area?
Mike, I'm assuming this would be blacktop.
Blacktop. Blacktop, possible.
Yeah.
Is there a rationale why the center parking is preferred?
I think the, the client is, is on and can certainly speak for themselves, himself, but I believe it's just, they consider it just easier to work with and more functional.
Yeah, because to me, it's, it is a pretty good, it's a good design, and now the most prominent feature of the site will be the parked cars there. I think you're losing out.
Well, we would defer to the board. That, that's the client preference, Tom, but certainly both options are presented. Whatever the pleasure of the board is. You know, both options are acceptable. One is preferred, but both are acceptable.
Did you try moving the, the porches? To the middle?
We did, we did, but it, it, it actually doesn't work. It's a roof. It's up in the roof when the gables come into each other.
Okay.
That's what was happening way, way up on the upper level.
But by having the. By having the parking in the middle, it gives you the opportunity to get shrubbery or trees along each, between each border. Basically, might help soft, continue to soften it a bit. And doing it this way, which I think you lose that opportunity entirely with the, with the parking on either, either side.
This, this, it'll come up for a second. There you go.
And you still have a little green space. I mean. Just more to the sides. Yeah, could be some landscaping, some, some lawn area. Yeah, I don't have a strong preference either way. I would defer to what the client wants. I think they accomplished what. I thought was our primary concern when that was up against the lot lines. And they were able to scale the building and move it back and gain some little space and. I, I guess I'm, I'm inclined to. Align with what the preference is here and give us some, an opportunity on, as Jim said, on the edge is to maybe landscape and soften that and. Still have some green space, so.
The other thing is that shoveling this one huge driveway basically and shoveling it off the side might be easier than, than do it on the sides.
Peter, Mike Feely. What are the, I know you have representative cars in there. I don't know if they're trucks. What are the sizes of those? The, it doesn't look like there's a lot of leeway.
These were actually put in by the site guys, but it's hard for me to tell what they are. They're, they're pretty, they're pretty wide. I looked at it in the context of the, on the view on the side part and where there's ten feet of pavement. The cars take it pretty, pretty much up the whole, the whole space. So those cars, I think, are a little bit large. Which I guess is conservatively good from a conservative perspective, but, but they're, they're, they're pretty big.
Normally parking spaces are nine by eighteen, right?
Right.
What? This is twenty. So it's as if two cars are parked. In a parking lot with enough space in between and there to open the doors, assuming they're both getting out at the same time, but yeah.
Give, give another thought basically to the fact that in the center. As opposed to the outside edges. You've got two driveways on either side, basically, so you're, you're putting an exit. When you're on the property lines, basically, pretty close to the drive-outs for the other two budding buildings. By putting it in the middle, you've got a better. Just distance and spacing basically between driveway to driveway. Curb cut to curb cut.
That's the curb cuts, my question too. So what's the, the curb cut that's there now? What's gonna happen to that? Is a new sidewalk gonna go in or?
Yeah, yeah, right now where it is, the driveway is to the right of this property over here. And actually, the whole front sidewalk there is all decrepit, really. It's all broken up and not in very good shape, so. Instead of the cut being right over to on the right-hand side there. We obviously just, that would become curving and, and then just the middle curb would be there.
Okay.
A new vertical granite curving along the, the frontage.
Yeah, and then we replace all the sidewalk and make it back to, you know. Good quality, because right now, like I said, it's, it's all broken up and uneven, so we obviously we replace and repave that whole front sidewalk area. And, you know, be in a lot better condition than it is right now.
By the time you get through with new services into this, there'll be no sidewalk, basically, so it's gonna have to be replaced. Curbing, curving is all gonna have to be reset to, to this plan, basically. There's probably enough pieces there to do that. And reset it so that at least there's some real curving there as opposed to something that's just a bump.
Yes, yeah, like I say, the way it is right now, it's, it's in real rough shape. And I guess one of the benefits for the digging up, it looks like the gas and the water services are right next to each other in a sewer. Looks like it's not too far off and located right about in the middle of that property. But again, you know what? That would all be replaced with new curving and, and all new sidewalks and to a much, you know, nicer standard than it is now.
Okay, and I do see it's small, but I've got my copy zoomed in. It does say vertical granite curving, so. That's good. It's consistent. It's kind of what's already there along the street, so.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I partner too, Keith, had looked around. We, we drove around to a lot of different. Some of the newer duplexes and stuff, and a lot of them had that driveway in the middle situation on a lot of them that we saw, so it seemed like something the, the board had enjoyed like before. And I, I talked to, what we like to do too, is, and I mentioned before, as far as the trees and everything, we're gonna try to save, you know, as much as that. But grow trees that we can and we replace anything that was there. If we'd like to have a border, probably maybe some more bushes and stuff for privacy. But, you know, anytime we can keep any of the growth, the older growth there, you know, we're gonna try to do our best to do that too.
Okay. So that'd be something typically we would have as a condition. In, in, you know, in a, in a decision that. Try to maintain trees, any that are lost, any of the established trees that. Do get lost for one reason or another, get replaced. So that it ensures.
Yeah, I'm a big tree guy. I like, I think it adds it and said that with the trees and they're so big, we try to probably put a few more bushes in between to form a barrier. Even though, you know, on both sides, we have just driveways and everything, but we wanna, you know, make it a little more private when we add some bushes in between where we could do to. To really form a good barrier between them.
Okay, and where there's a finding and not a full site plan review, we're not going through a full landscape review and all the rest, right? But that's, it's encouraging to hear you say that, and we'd certainly be proponents of, of whatever you can do and work with your neighbors and, and.
Yeah, I did talk to one of the, we walked around because it's rentals. It was tough. I, we talked to the, one of the young ladies that live next door to us and, and explained to them, you know, what we were doing. And again, you don't mention to them if anything with trees, we're gonna try to keep it maintained, because I know it creates a lot of, it just gives an old, old feeling to keep old trees here, so. You know, probably have to trim a lot of branches that are on the property growing on, but as much as we can, we're gonna try to keep anything that's there and replace anything that, that gets taken down.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep. All right, and the other board members, any comments, questions on the proposed plan and. Satisfy what we're looking for? Okay. All right. Well, then, if there's nothing else at this time, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or a question, again, I've got the participant list open here. Please raise your hand. In the room, and we'll call on you in order. We'll ask you to just state your name and address for the record. Rolling the list, not seeing any hands going up. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close it to public testimony. So back to the board. So again, Mike, what you need?
We need simply a finding that the proposed revision to the lot is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming condition.
Well, it's not increasing any non-conformities, right?
Removing all non-conformities. Nope, there are no, the only non-conformity that will remain is the lot with, other than that, that we're removing two non-conforming structures.
Right. Okay. Any other final comments, questions, board members, before we proceed? What appears to be a vote?
I guess I, I recommend the center parking. I don't know where everybody else is on this.
Yeah, we probably should do that so that they can proceed and we ensure the final plan is reflects that. Yep. Center.
Which would be option, what option is that, Peter? What sheet is that?
That would be option A.
Option A, as shown, yep.
Okay. Okay. Any board member wish to make a motion at this time? The chair would entertain it.
Dave, I'm not on this. I wasn't here last time.
Greg, do you have wording?
See a better review.
Yeah, would just be that the proposed condition is to find that the proposed condition is, is depicted on option A. Would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing condition.
I did tell you all to be ready.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Greg.
Okay, I'm having problems with, I don't know what's going on. It switches back and forth. Do we also want to do the, it's not substantially more detrimental? And if it were to be found to be?
Two-pronged, yeah. In fact, they're making it better, but I think both prongs are appropriate.
The wording of the second prong, I'll make the motion.
Yep. All right, Greg.
One second, I have mine up. What's the, the date on your sheet here, Peter?
I think these, well, it's all up here. They're all dated one, four, twenty-one.
All right. I would move to find that the. You scroll down. That the, the site plan is provided on site plan option A parking as provided by Phoenix Architects. In their plan dated one, four, twenty-one is not substantially more detrimental. To the neighborhood than the existing conditions. And if it were found to be. What's the wording on this one here?
So I think, great, the first, the first one would be that there's no new non-conformity, and then second, if there were found to be, it would not be substantially more detrimental.
Gotcha.
That's all.
All right, so I meant my motion to be that there. Is no. Well, now there's no increase in our conformity, actually is decreasing all non-conformities. And if this was found to be increasing in our conformity, it's substantially, not substantially more detrimental.
Okay.
Shouldn't we attach the reference, basically, Phoenix's rest of architectural drawings?
Yeah, it's, it's all the drawings dated one, four, with the parking option A being the, the one we're approving.
Yeah. I made sure it's part of the decision.
Okay, that's your motion, Greg?
Second.
And then she. Yeah, where is the sheet? There we go. Okay. So voting members, Dave, Jim, Amy, Joe and Greg. All right, so all in favor, Greg? Amy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I am, so that is unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate.
Welcome. So Michael, one thing before we go and close this hearing. Appreciate you sending the plans when you did. That, that was helpful. We will need a, a paper copy that I will need to stamp as the final plans.
I'll get them right over to Gail.
So if you can get them over to Gail and then she'll let me know and I'll stamp them just so we get those in the official file. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right.
All right, good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Now I think we're proceeding back to the top of the. Order in continued hearings. The next one being cases dash twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, twelve, twenty-one, thirteen. And twenty-one, fourteen, six, ten Salem Street, Wakefield LLC at six, ten Salem Street. And for that, I believe we have attorney Brian McGrail and team.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant six, ten Salem Street, Wakefield LLC. I can see Paul Casiano, the principal of the entity, is with us tonight. Also, Peter Sandus and Steve DeFuria are here on our architectural team. And I believe John Ogren is here on Site Civil. To refresh the board's memory, we were given some homework assignments at the last meeting. Um, to refresh the board's memory, uh, we were given some homework assignments, um, at the last uh, meeting that was continued to tonight. Uh, specifically, we were asked to look at, uh, the following, uh, to provide some detail. On the garage windows, in the lighting and how that could be screened. Um, we were asked to provide some details on proposed materials. Uh, we were asked to provide a roof layout plan for um, some of the um, equipment that will be on the roof. We were asked to provide some balcony drainage detail. Um, we were asked to provide cornice band in window sections for a closer look at how they would uh, be portrayed on, on the building. We're also la- asked to look into the, the location of the elevator. Uh, in the elevator penthouse type thing that works with the building and the impact that that would have on the elevations that we were showing. We were asked to get some information on the water meter room, uh, where that would be located and how it would look. Uh, we were asked to provide some lighting specification details. And also, uh, the board asked us to do an elevation um, of the building. Uh, coming from Wakefield to see how the impact on the building next door would be. So I think we're, I'm happy to report that we, I think we have all that information, um, hopefully to. Uh, the satisfaction of the board, and if not, then we'll, we will make sure we get it. Um, so Peter, um, Sandus, Pete, are you gonna handle this one as far as, uh, the presentation on those issues?
If you can present it, I, I'd like to talk about it.
Yes, I can.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
I know, I know that we, in our packet, we showed the rendering, so I'd like to go.
Yeah.
And not talk about those first, but jump into the.
Okay, you've got it, Peter, so if I can, I think I can get control of the screen. Let me know if everybody sees that.
Yeah.
That work?
Yes.
Okay, so Pete, do you have anything you wanna do on this, on this page or no?
I'd like to come back to it, but first, to the, to the parking level plan.
Okay, so you tell me when, Pete.
Yeah, I think it's coming, it's after the materials.
The twenty-one business days or twenty-one days?
There we go. So, so this, in this plan, um, we are now showing on the right-hand side near stairway B. A water meter room that didn't exist before.
Hold on, Pete, Mr. Chair, I, I think somebody's not muted.
Looking. Think there was some noise, I thought I.
I couldn't hear what you're saying, that's, that's all.
I get no problem.
There it is.
Yeah, where is that? Okay. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
It's a, a, at this level, which is the parking level, uh, with discussions with John Ogren, where the water comes into the site. We located a water meter room near stairway B and it happens between. Uh, in the pathway that exists between the front parking spaces and the rear parking spaces, you can. See it there, it's a linear room, it's approximately four feet wide by twenty feet long. Um, would have to be heated, but that's where we, we were asked about where we would bring the water meters in, and that's where we thought we would do it. Um, I believe that's the only change to this level. When, um, Brian, if now you scroll down to the uh, elevation of the building.
Keep going down?
Yep, to the front. Oh, here's the, we can talk about that, I'm sorry, Brian, go, you can go back to the roof plan if you want. So here, I, I went up onto the roof and started to do a, a roof, this is up above the fourth floor, roof drainage plan. As well as locating uh, up on the upper left, uh, scuttle from the stairwell to the roof. And also locating in the uh, center with the two buildings in the center, the elevator shaft. Um, so that we could see that, and now that's incorporated in the elevations and the renderings as well. Yes, right there. So now if you go to the next page, Brian. Took time to go, I'm looking at the proposed front elevation, I went through the building and I took. Um, six inches out of each floor of that building, and then I took. One foot out of the upper floor of the building, and I did that so that I could reduce the building by. Three feet, and I, so I brought the height of the building down three feet, and then I added a parapet of three feet. So rather than have the parapet go above, um, what was proposed before, which was. Forty-five feet, I kept the building at forty-five feet and took the, the mass out of the building. And that, that parapet up above is allowing me to hide. Uh, the HVAC units and, and about ninety percent of the elevator shaft, you can see about two feet of it. Um, is, is sticking up. Uh, where it hits, but it's back, remember, from the corner. The, these are flat elevations. That, that was, I, I thought. A way to do a couple of things that helped me reduce the mass a little bit of the building and help me do the hide. I also took the time to pull that upper parapet, even though it's in the same material as the fourth floor. I'm insetting it almost a foot, so that it's not one high wall. It'd be a break line and the metal, um, standing seam metal, uh, would continue again. Uh, again, again, to break the magnitude of, of that, uh, fourth floor. We took, um, if we go, let's see, go to the next page, Brian. On the right elevation, uh, to break this facade, because it's very visible from Salem Street at certain points. I added, um, the, um. Angular bays and the two front units, so there's two of them. Um, and that helps break that, so they're just not the square bays, uh, before. I went through and added all the scuppers to the, to the, um, decks, the inset balconies. Uh, to make sure that they could be drained out. I looked at my floor plan and I can vent all of my dryer systems. Uh, to the side of these, uh, square bays. In, in almost every condition, I, in every condition, I'll then vent everything else out, uh, through the roof behind the parapet. Also took into account, in one, one of our discussions, we talked about the bays being, uh, dark. The material inside there being dark, so we decided to use the light siding, uh, inside the balconies. Uh, and I'd also like to propose, um, that we do recessed lighting in those balconies controlled by the building. So that at night, the balconies are all lit, um, down, uh, from above. A, a way to bring light in there without having anything really on the face of the building. So now, Brian, I think we can go back to the, if we can start at the beginning, back on the, uh, renderings. And it takes a minute to load the PDF sometimes, there we go. So updating the, um, this front elevation. Uh, now, um, we've taken, we've taken the time to pick the color. The bays, which is a black, uh, forest green or dark forest green, a Benjamin Moore color, we picked the charcoal color of the, um. Vertical, um, siding, metal siding on the roof, we picked the siding, uh, on the edge of the. The hardy plank siding in that color, there's a whole sheet of this, also picked the bricks. Called out the limestone banding that separates the bricks from the siding above, adjusted the height of this rendering. So that it, uh, now reflects what the, um, AutoCAD plans are doing, and you can see. In the, in the center there above the door, you can see a little bit of the, um, the elevator in this rendering. So if you go to the next render, Brian. Oh, oh, Brian, we also showed the existing, uh, building, just so we can compare what's there now to what we're proposing. And I know it shows that building in the background a little bit. Um, that's up on the left there. Here is the, um. Here is the rendering as you're coming down Salem Street, we rendered it with the trees, uh, in the same time of year. Uh, in bloom and, and a fair amount of the building is shaded, not only from the trees on the site, but also the ones. Uh, to our neighbor's building, uh, but now the bays are included, um, on the right side elevation, so they kind of wrap. And add a little bit of detail to that elevation. Um, Brian, to the next one, please. Here we went back to our winter scene, again, updated it, um, to show those, um, angular bays. Um, that were added in and, and adjust the heights as well. This, this, I think Amy, we talked about this before, but because of the color, the lighting, coloring of the siding looks different. Uh, that's why we'll have on the, on the sheet coming, we're actually gonna show you what the actual siding color is. And then here, we, we put this in purposely, but to show when those trees are in full bloom. If you pull back a little bit on Salem Street, that's what you see of our building, uh, coming down Salem Street, going towards Linkfield. Very hidden by those trees. But we thought it was for showing, so we could all see what, what they, but it's faded, obviously. We, we then went in and, and began to render, um, each elevation, so that. Cause it came to question, what is the rear built, rear of the building look like? This, this is the rear of the building. Now rendered, um, so that it's clear that it does match, um, the front and the left and the right of the building. Can you go to the next sheet, Brian?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, where am I here? I'm trying to see the, um, the right side elevation. It's coming up, I think.
It should be it, Pete, it should be coming up some on my screen, proposed graphic right elevation.
Okay. Maybe it's lagging, I'm still, I'm still seeing, oh, there, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. So here, here's the right elevation, um. Uh, with the two, uh, angular bays in the front, uh, and the two square bays in the back. We tried it first doing, using one bit, but it, I don't know, it just didn't look, uh, symmetrical, so I added enough, adding, you know, changing two of them. Um, and again, adjusted everything, uh, for the heights as they now are. Um, is our next sheet the material sheet, Brian?
Yep.
So in the material sheet, we called out a flagstaff brick, which has a lot of red, but picks up some of the tans. Um, our tan gray, uh, of the hardy plank siding, which is called cobblestone, the dark forest green MDO on the bays. We, I had the building reviewed by Pella, it's a Pella lifestyle window, um, in black. As we showed in our elevation. Um, just to scroll up a little bit, Brian.
Yep.
And then we went ahead and did, uh, the corrugated medical, meta, metal siding in dark bronze, the standing seam. Um, metal roof in a black, and something I was going to propose, which is to do, um. A perforated metal screening system, uh, over the garage windows, so even though there's gonna be an aluminum. A metal frame that looks like a window frame there, I put this screening behind on the inside of that. Uh, to screen the light, um, that'll be, uh, existing in the night, um, in the garage and diffuse it. Next to that, I picked, um, an LED two-by-two, um, lighting fixture that'll be used in the garage to light it. Um, I think, um, scroll to the next page, Brian. Um, the images of everybody's, um, camera is blocked, I was trying to see where my details of. The, uh, we did a, uh, detail of the parapet and how it would be built.
Hold on. You tell me that, you tell me what sheet number you want, Pete.
That's the last.
It is, it's the last sheet, that's right, next to the rear elevation.
That's it?
Yeah, yeah, so it shows how we're, uh, we intend to build that out of, um. Out of AZAC and, and blocking, um, to show, uh, that's the parapet that exists between. Um, the first three floors, uh, and the fourth floor. Uh, we showed a, a window detail, which is calling out one by six AZAC trim around the windows with a one by two sill. Kind of for a traditional framing of the double hung windows, the one page back, Brian. We show the detail of, uh, the aluminum frame at the garage, the limestone surround. Uh, air for trim in the brickwork, and also the detail of when the brick, uh, work comes up, how it meets a limestone cap. Uh, before going to the, um, hardy plank siding above, so that, that is really the, um. The cornice detail of the lower leg floor one, and this cornice detail at floor three. Cornice detail at floor four is really the inset of the, uh, standing seam metal, that's then wrapping to the roof above. And let me see if I. I believe I hit.
You good, Pete?
Yeah, I think so.
Great. So I'm, I'm happy, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, um, we've tried to. But we try, have tried to be responsive to the request of the board. Um, and certainly, if we missed it anyway, we're happy to try again, but hopefully we, we, we were responsive, um. I know we went through these slides pretty, pretty, uh, quickly, if, if any board members would like to see something more. Um, take a, a better look at something, I'm happy to go to that appropriate slide.
Uh, I, Peter, Chip, if we can address the lighting in the garage a little bit, I know, um, from what I watched last week. Our last meeting, there was some concern about. Lighting. Um, in giving that some thought. Can we do, can you do a low-level safety light for ninety percent of the night when there's nobody in the garage? And then have different occupancy centers, so as somebody's walking out to their car, it, it doesn't light the whole garage? But the area that they're going to?
Yes, so that you're saying, you're saying there's a certain level of low lighting that exists all the time.
I think you have to have some sort of safety.
Yeah, I do too.
And, but that will be very muted, very, just so you can see, I don't know what you think you need for that. But then as somebody comes down at eleven o'clock, a visitor or whomever, and is walking through the garage. All the lights don't need to come on, they're just a series of lights that need to come on brighter to get them to their, uh, car.
Um, yep.
I, I think we can be very creative, with all the new stuff that's out there for lighting and for occupancy sensors and all.
Motion sensors.
If you're, if you're thoughtful. In your planning, it can really help with, with light pollution.
So I think it's a great idea, and then, then we're, it, it's, it's energy efficient too, we're not.
It, it is, and, and quite frankly, you know, from, I'll use eleven PM to five AM, there may be no activity in the garage.
Right.
So why do you need to have bright lights?
Right.
And, and I think that will help. With some people's, you know, concerns about, jeez, what these things are gonna glow, and now that you've done the screening. It's even gonna be that much more subdued. Uh, in there.
Okay.
So I, so Brian, that to me would go into probably the ops manual. That, uh, occupancy sensor lighting program needs to be in place for the garage. And.
Chip, are you going beyond just zoned, go into more, um, sub-zone type of thing where you, as you walk, lights ahead of you come on?
Yes.
As opposed to a whole, like, zone come on?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, I, you know, I'm not the electrician to know how to wire, but like, so not that half of it comes on, but literally. X amount, a quarter of it comes on, and then as you leave that, that goes off and the next one comes on. Uh, they're, they're very creative now, Jim, as you know, that. And efficient, so it's just making sure that whoever's doing the electrical design understands the concept.
Yeah. Peter? Peter?
Yes.
Um. You've raised the par, you've raised a parapet that's three feet, did you say?
Correct.
And is that parapet setback from the edge of the building?
It is.
Alright, how much?
It's about a foot.
Alright. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, uh, whether that's enough break. Or whether, you know, where, we've asked you to do something basically to block the elevator. Um, override. Um, I'm almost wondering whether it would be better to be a foot down from that and it'd be two foot, you get a little more of the elevator ru- override, but. Um, I'm almost wondering whether it would be better to be a foot down from that and it'd be two foot. You get a little more of the elevator ru- override, but not. Not increase the appearance of the, of the height of the building.
So bring, so bring the parapet down a foot, but inset at a foot more.
Uh, no, I, I, I not sure how the shadow lines would show up, Peter. It might be, it might be a foot, might be just, just fine. Uh. Uh. But that it, it ends up basically, even though you've done gymnastics on the lower floor, it, it's just. A black mass up there that um makes the building a little heavier on the top, I guess, is what my concerns are. And the other thing is, while I'm talking about it, is the elevator override. Um, the building that was just finished over on North Avenue. Um, the sister to the other one that you were involved in the design has got a huge um exhaust on the top of the elevator shaft.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's nothing we ever saw. It's there. Um, there is a requirement by code to have. An exhaust on the to- on the top so far, s- some distance from the rooftop. In order for the fire department to vent the elevator, but that looks excessive. So I'd ask whether there's anything going to end up on this one. Similar to that. So even though it's a penthouse, there's still some sort of exhaust rated exhaust shaft that's. For the fire department to use to ventilate.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I note is that it very nicely, the garage doors are painted out. Basically to match the brick. So we should make sure we get a color for the garage doors that at least will. Uh, I guess hide it somewhat when then close. And. I guess I, I want some more dimensions. Um, I'd like some of the parapets for the top of this building. And some information around the bays and the bay windows as to how much they stick out. You know, they could be sticking out from all I know. Anywhere from a foot to six inches. I'd like more, I'd like some more information on, on that sort of stuff. And the cornice one that you showed in your detail has no, has no dimensional detail. It just mentions the construction components itself.
We'll, we'll dimension that. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Now the board members, any comments, questions? Greg, Greg, your audios. When I.
Better?
That's better.
Weird. It keeps kicking me to a different microphone. Um. Lost my train of thought. Oh, Peter, did you say those recessed balconies are going to be lit controlled by the building? So they'll all be.
Yes, I, I, it came to my mind that if I could do recessed lighting in the balconies. And have that controlled by the building so that all the balconies would be lit every night. I thought that would be kind of, kind of a nice way to get. A facade lit. Um, but, and not have dark holes of the balconies. No one's at home or if no one turns their light on. Um, that would kind of kill my idea, but I thought if it could be controlled by the building, um, then we guarantee that would be lit. At night.
So to that, to that, Peter, I would suggest that that goes in the operation manual as well. As to the timing of that.
Yep.
And then somebody may wanna, and then you're going to have to have the ability to override that. Right? How are you, how's the use of the balcony being managed? And is there separation between units up? I couldn't tell from the floor plan. Whether there was any separation uh on the balconies between units.
You time up on the fourth floor?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good point.
And I, and I guess going back to the lit balconies too. I mean, as someone who, you know, had rented apartments for quite a while. It seems interesting from a tenant standpoint. I don't know if I would want mine lit when I'm, either when I'm not using it or someone across from me. You know, if you're on that L there, someone across, you know, you're trying to sleep, say, you know, you might be a nurse or someone shift work. And you're trying to sleep early. Do you really want every other balcony shining at, you know, have to buy blackout windows because the building controls about?
Well, maybe it can be, maybe it can just be very light, you know, it doesn't have to be excessive lighting. And maybe to Chip's point, if it's a low level of light. Um, then it would be some, but if I'm there and I'm going to go out and use my balcony, then overriding it and the lights would come up. Maybe that's that kind of thing where it's, it's just a dim light. Uh, but, but Chip, on the floor floor, the building is, is. Providing uh separation on those balconies.
And is that on your plan?
Get the fourth floor plan up here. I love that.
Areas of the balconies, right?
Yes, that's right. So I'm just seeing, you know, these wings of the building is a lit, I suppose is that extra couple of feet.
So Peter, where, where? Where are the, so are, are your pavers the only thing people have access to?
Yes, that's the way I would have it. Yes.
Okay. So the wraparound in the corner.
They're not going to like walk in along the edge of something.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so to the comment about lighting on the, on the porches or balconies. Um, I'm not a renter. I haven't been for a while, but I do uh go to Florida once in a while. I like to s- sit on the balcony, look out at the beach in the evening. Watch the stars go by and all of a sudden I can't see the sky, stars or look at, look at the sunset because I got this bloody light on. In my eye. You know, I, I kind of, I get where you're going, Peter, but I, I, I recommend just throw it on a switch and leave it to the tenant.
Yeah, this is the first time I've heard a development, or even talking about that, and we're probably spending enough time talking about it, so. I mean, it's your building, but I just, I. I would leave it up to the tenants. And if, if we're trying to look for some sort of accent lighting, maybe sconces or something we've done on other properties could be examples, but. In, in a limited way, in a, in a low lighting kind of way, but I. I, I would concur. Let's leave it up to the tenants.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, there could be ground lighting, um, similar to what happens at Four Corners with that apartment where some of the. Uh, planted areas basically have some uplighting, something that just, you know, accent the ground level as opposed to. Making a deal of the rest of the building.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that would make it look like it has a halo or UFO landing or something like that, so. I, I would, I would go for less is better.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that we're at the point of this project. Uh, it seems like we're into really quite minutia at this point. That, um. I, I'm at the point where I, you know, would like to think about what the conditions are going to be. And uh, you know, remember what the relief is that's being requested. Uh, so with your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. McCreel for the next meeting to start putting some of that stuff together. So we can just make sure we're, we're there. And to, I'd also offer a thought that if. Peter and Jim could meet. Offline or however, during the next couple of weeks to kind of. Get these details straightened out that Jim would feel comfortable with and work through those details. That maybe we won't have to spend so much time. On the, again, what I would call the minutia, something that most people aren't going to understand, shadow lines and things like that, but I know they're important to Jim and. Make these projects worthwhile. So I would suggest with your permission, maybe we ask that they kind of. Do that real fine tuning uh over the next couple of weeks offline and then come back with. With a good final presentation and we can wrap this thing up.
That works for me, Jim.
Put a bow on it.
You, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay. No, I would agree. That way we're not iterating on a couple of different versions of that. Just next time it has everything you feel you need, Jim, to. We're, and, and yeah, as Chip said, we're done with that, that aspect of it. Yeah, I mean, Chip, there was a lot that we covered in the last meeting. The board.
No, I saw that, but I think.
Several concerns about the look. So we just have to make sure that folks are comfortable moving forward beyond this point. With where the building is, the changes that Peter articulated, uh, the colors, the materials, folks still aren't, you know. Comfortable and ready to move forward, then even talking conditions is premature, right? We're just not there unless.
But at this point, but at this point, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that if people aren't comfortable. There's, there's got to be something big that they're not comfortable with, not the cornice detail that Jim is talking about. I just don't hear that. I'm not hearing that. Well, then I didn't hear it. I mean, last week there were some lighting and, you know, there were some general comments, but there weren't. Specifics, so I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Um, let me just jump in for a second. Um, I appreciate the work that Peter's done on it. I think that. What you've been doing has been helpful for myself. I'm not a hundred percent on board with this project. Um, so just putting that out there at this point. I just think, um, I know that we're talking about how it looks right now, but the massing and the size and the traffic and. The impact on the town and everything like that is still really holding me back.
I actually feel better, um, given what I saw tonight. Um, I was concerned about that side, the right side of the building when you're leaving Wakefield into Linfield. I thought the extra renderings helped. I thought the work that Peter did helped and seeing what, what the reality is with the trees out there. What it's actually going to look like. So taking that perspective further back actually helped me. So I feel pretty good about it.
I mean, I guess my, Amy, to, to, I guess I'd like to know what. I mean, we had the traffic advisory group look at it. They say there's going to be no impact. So I guess I'm kind of curious as to what you're not comfortable with in regards to traffic. The rest of it. You know, that's a, that's a, that, another discussion, but. I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, we just throw this word traffic out there, yet we've had all the experts look at it and they say there's no impact.
Right. And I just, and, and I know that they did the study and everything and that they have their formulas that they use. But again, everything is done with COVID and I know that they've used their percentages to update what things are going to be. Um, I'm looking at this whole street as a whole picture. I'm not taking just this one. This one project, I'm looking at everything as a whole. And I think that overall, even with the numbers that they've given us, I don't. I don't feel comfortable with it. And I think just the impact on, on all, on other resources as well. Is just, it's a little unsettling for me.
I, I guess I go back to, and I don't think you were on the board at the time, but when we went through Shaw's.
Right.
Shaw's was going to change that whole route and, you know, all the lights were going to make it so that we'd never get through, you know. It, it just, the, the experts know what they're talking about. I guess that's all I, they, they understand it better than we do. So that's why, that's why I, I, I particularly, when it comes to traffic. Rely on what they say because they do it, you know, whether Wakefield or Medford or Malden or Somerville or. Lexington, you know, that's what they're working with and that's what they know. So the rest of it, I don't, I, I just. I hate the, I'm concerned about traffic and no specifics. That's my only take on traffic.
Right. No, and I agree with you. I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah, no, but I, I get it. We're doing, but we've had, um, you know, the town paid for a, a large study on where. Housing would happen in this town and, and Salem Street's one of the streets and Foundry Street's one of the streets.
I know, I just, I feel like we're getting to a point where it's just getting to be too much. And I know that this was all in the master plan and. Everything, but at some point, and I've said it before, at what point is enough enough? And I might be at my breaking point with these buildings. I don't know.
Well, I mean, the other aspect is it is own business and it is already developed. I mean, this isn't going to be a park. Nobody's going to put walking trails and put trees back in here. It, it's already been developed and another use for many years. It's own business and a lot of different things could go in here. If this was an office building.
Mm-hmm.
Would we, would we be as concerned? I just think something about residential developments have a certain trigger with people.
Yeah, I.
If this was a building that had offices and people were coming and going nine to five and it was being redone or rebuilt. I, I don't know that it would have the same kind of reaction by some people. Like, I, it, it doesn't with me, but I just wonder if it does with others.
Yeah, I, I happen to love residential, right? I love people coming to our town and. Living in our town and growing our town. I, you know, we're, we're a town inside Route one twenty-eight. It's, we're very accessible to Boston. We're, we're, we're a desirable destination. As long as we do it tastefully. I think we're okay. And I think we spend a lot of time making sure that it is tasteful.
Mr. Chair, can I just add, can I just add two things, Mr. Chair? Sure, one second, Brian. Yeah, I, I agree. I just think it's important for us to keep in mind what this corridor is. We've, we understand, we all drive it. We know. It already has traffic issues. We know part of that is out of our control with Linfield. Um, and we can control the projects that within our boundaries. And we, I, two, two of these on our docket tonight. Um, I'm trying to consider all aspects of the project from massing to traffic to parking and potential overflow parking and what that could do to them. We hear all that and we understand it. We're trying to work with the applicant to make each of these uh the best fit that they can be. Um, also understanding what, what alternatives could also be here, given its own for business. And so we, I think we just all have to continue to be mindful of what alternatives could be here, but at the same time, they're not here. This is here. And if we say, we don't think it fits the neighborhood and we are going to deny it, who knows what may down the road. It may end up being something. More detrimental, worse for us as a town. And it's done by right and we have no say in it. So it's just. Please be mindful of, of all of that. I, I know most of you are, but I think it bears reminding. And again, to the members of the public who are here as well. So. Anyway, I'll, I'll stop. Brian, please go ahead. Well, I was just going to mention two things because an office building was mentioned, an office building on this site in the business owned district, which this is business owned, is allowed by right. So it would not be before you're aboard. Um, it could just be built uh by uh the proponent who was doing that. Um, to, to their liking, uh, if you will, architecturally, et cetera. Um, the second thing is, um, as far as these types of projects ago, go, there's, there's, there's basically a mandate from the state at this point. For projects of this nature. Um, as a matter of fact, the, the state legislature just enacted. Um, um, some modifications to uh the zoning act. Which is going to require projects like this because one of the projects that an office building doesn't provide on a site like this is, is affordable housing. And there's a dire need for affordable housing in this state and in this town. Um, this project will, will provide five affordable housing units. And that means a lot. Um, I've had the pleasure to attend the lotteries when these affordable units are awarded to families. And I encourage everybody to attend um at some point because um it's amazing the excitement. Um, for the families and, and sometimes the young professionals and the couples and, and every now and then there are children involved in, in the excitement. Um, so, you know, um, these, these are the sites, the infill type sites that our housing production plan. Specifically calls that we submitted as a town. It was approved by the planning board. Um, to the DHCD, um, that these were the types of sites that we were, we as a community would, would support. Um, for housing and we thought was a good idea for housing. So I just don't want the affordable component to be lost in all of this. Because it is very important, um, not only from a society perspective, but I think from our town perspective. Uh, to continue to make a commitment in that regard as we have as a town. Um, but it's, but you know, we're not there at our ten percent. Um, and this will, again, will help us get to that point. Thanks, Brian. Any other board members?
Yeah, probably.
Spoken. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Probably the planning board, when they, when they did the master plan, were thinking that by putting. Housing on this outer edge near one twenty-eight, it, most people are just going to go onto one twenty-eight. And not like if this unit was, this building was in the middle of town, then it's going to have to go through all the streets around. This is more right on a, a main drag in the form of one twenty-eight. So putting, loo- looking in the master plan to put the housing in here, they probably had that in their mind. That this has less of a drag on the, on the traffic in our town because it's on the outside edge of the town. Uh, in, in an one twenty-eight area where they can escape directly, basically, so to speak, to their business or their work or whatever. Um, I suspect that was in the mix of things at the time.
Anyone else?
Chair, can you hear me again?
We can hear you.
Okay, I, this thing keeps kicking me off. I kept, I, I certainly agree with, with everything Mr. McGrath said. One thing I do want to point out though is, you know, we keep harkening back to the housing production plan, although it certainly is persuasive, that housing production plan did expire over a year ago. Um, so yes, persuasive, but it isn't, you know, a kind of hammer to get things done in town as it, you know, as it may have once been. Uh, saying that, on the other hand, I do agree now that the enough is enough argument really doesn't hold much water when you see, you know, different studies and different, you know, again, there was an article just this week again, how this whole area is in absolute dire need of housing. Um, not even a, you know, necessarily affordable level at every level. Yes, that's really. I, I mean, the enough is enough, really. There isn't enough.
And thank you, Greg. Any other board members with other thoughts or comments at this time? Okay, Brian, can I ask you to just review the boards? For, for everyone involved, the, uh, the applications, one obviously was just for the site, uh, the, the special permit for it, but there were a couple of others related. If you can just go through those, given where we are and just maybe give the the audience a reminder or a fresher.
Um, yeah, I can. John, you, is John, um, well, one of the things that we, we applied for is, uh, potential dimensional parking relief, which I'm going to go through with John because, you know, prior to the next meeting, I think we can, we can probably do a better job at that meeting because I don't think we're going to need that relief uh, on this project. Uh, as we've mentioned a number of times, we're not looking for relief for the required number of parking spaces. We have an excess number of parking spaces under our, under our bylaw. And I think we meet all the setbacks in open areas on parking. I would just want to do a scrub on the plan, Mr. Chair, to make sure. But that was one form of relief that we were asking for potentially.
Yep.
Um, and then the other form of relief would just be the standard dimensional, uh, as far as we, we are meeting the height requirement, um, I think on maybe one of the, um, in the multifamily district, potentially, um, one of the setback requirements or, or the setback requirements might need relief.
Okay. So we can just review those, given, again, the project has evolved a little bit, the designs have changed a little bit.
Correct.
If we can go through those next time and just articulate again where we are today, based on these current plans, what it is that you would be seeking, um, relief for and what perhaps you don't, no longer need.
Yes.
In light of the initial applications, um, contemplating maybe the need for that.
Mr. Chairman, I also don't think we've seen an O and M plan yet.
No.
Have we, Mr. McGrath?
No.
So that, I mean, I think at this point, you just dust off the cover and change some numbers, but um, you know, make sure we talk about the lighting in the, in the garage and you know.
Yep.
Know all those fun topics. You know, I think, I think, you know, we all forget about the O and M plan. And when we talk about parking and spacing and all of that, that the snow removal, snow maintenance is very important to these projects, given that, um, you know, we can't afford to lose spaces, even though there's an excess. You know, all these spaces are important and we've heard how important they are to the neighbors and everything else. So, so we need to make sure that the O and M's A are followed and B, really talk about how they're going to handle it. And, you know, if they start losing spaces, they got to bring something in. Doesn't mean they have to take it off site, but they got to get the spaces back.
Yep.
As well as landscaping and maintaining a healthy landscape.
Yeah.
We want the site to look good on day one and day a thousand and 10,000.
Yeah, I think we're seeing with projects like this and, and whatnot that certainly, you know, because of the level of housing that it is, they do keep it looking good and it is sprinkled and those things. I, I think we lose it more on the commercial stuff, like the trees that have never been replanted at Irving and things like that. So, you know, when, when there's not a need to keep it looking good, so people rent or own, uh, it tends to deteriorate a little bit. So that's my soapbox on that.
Well, again, I just, I want to close on this discussion because again, I think we're looking already ahead to the, sort of the punch list for next meeting. And I just want to make sure we're in a, we're collectively in a position to move forward. Amy has voiced her concerns about maybe not being totally comfortable. Um, we obviously need, you know, four out of five positive votes to approve this. Um, and it, it, you know, the board needs to find certain criteria met to do that, a special permit criteria. Um, and I think we're all familiar with that. So I would, uh, I would ask, is there any other board member who just is not comfortable with this project as currently presented? Uh, potentially meeting a criteria in their minds for granting of a special permit? Because if they're not, then we, the rest of the discussion really can't proceed. So is there anyone other than Amy that potentially is not comfortable moving forward with these final details? Okay, hearing none, then I'm, I'm okay moving forward then. So January 27th, O and M plan, drafting some conditions, review the relief that's going to be required, given the current set of plans that we have. Anything else, board members?
Do we want a construction schedule yet?
Yeah, we usually get a draft of that. And the only sign is that address above the front entrance. Nothing, no monuments, nothing at the curb. No monuments on, okay, we've had some of those on properties. Okay, just the address up front. Okay. And I would say maybe just any final thoughts on the lighting? I don't know if, we have a lighting plan, right?
I don't think, I don't believe we do have a lighting plan.
Is it just, uh?
Not sure that we have the cuts for all the lighting.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure we work with Mr. McCain on that.
Okay.
Make sure that, uh, because Jim's a stickler on the lighting as I will. So.
Yeah, I mean, front entrance for sure, but right, there's no light poles, there's no big, you know, parking lot kind of lighting needed, requested. Um, just whatever's on the building, in the balconies, in the garage, right? That's, you know, emergency lighting around the other back, the back and sides, right? Is any sort of emergency lighting on the building?
Yeah, might be some ballard lighting by the entrance way. I mean, there might, might be some because there, there, there is some parking.
Yeah, so I talked to one other item that was, that I think was of, to refresh the board, that was very important to the board. And I think to some members of the public, I, I take my condition notes was the preservation of those trees on the, on the right side of the building as you look at it. Um, so I talked to Jim Emanuel, the landscape architect. Um, and he's going to put together a construction protection plan for those trees that we, you know, that we could either make a condition or part of the O and M plan.
You know, we determined that those aren't your trees.
Right.
Aren't they on the other people's property?
We want to, we want to protect them.
Oh, I, I, and so do I want you to, but I, I know when we were first talking, so uh, Brian, I do think that there needs to be some communication with that group at some point to say, hey, you know, can we do this?
Yeah. Yep. But certainly a reasonable condition could be like, you're going to work with the butters.
Yeah.
And make every attempt to save them if anything can't be for one reason or another, accident or natural causes that you replace them.
Yeah, and I'm sure the butter would appreciate that.
Yes.
My recommendation, and I'll say it again, keep the, the old foundation on that side to retain the trees. And it, because your building is not sitting on that old foundation that's fitting several feet away. So you can keep that foundation as a retaining wall. Basically, and, and basically assist disturbing those trees, not disturbing those trees. Easy peasy.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Motion?
Uh, public.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Dave. We've got, I got, I got you a little of your usual, got you ahead of your little bit of your usual pace. Sorry.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Uh, any comments, questions? Please raise your hand in the room. And I will call on you. I'm scrolling the list here, looking for hands. Uh, okay. Susan Wetmore.
Hello.
Hi, Susan. If you can just take your name and, name and address for the record, I know we've.
Sure. Susan Wetmore, um, 12 Sunset Drive. I just wanted to make a comment about, uh, traffic. And I understand when, you, you know, when we see the traffic reports and the traffic, um, studies, that they never, you know, the reality is usually not the same in my experience to the developments on Salem Street. Um, and when the, you know, the difference between a business or, uh, a residence, you know, housing, either one is okay with me. Um, I know it's, there's building going to happen in those places. I know that some of those, the areas are not in great shape, so that's fine. And I appreciate when they, when you look at um, a project and try to make it look at the best it can. I understand that. But the traffic situation is something that doesn't go away. And there's a, there's a different component when it's, um, residents as than a business. And the, one of the concerns that I have with getting out of my own neighborhood and all of these apartment buildings is that, you know, obviously there's a lot of trips back and forth, which is their right. But the problem with traffic happens when you come out the one driveway they, they have and you can go either right or left. So that can really stop traffic. Um, that's our problem getting out of our neighborhood and that's going to be the problem that's going to accentuate the problem for other people doing the same thing. Um, and it's just the unique, you know, when we, when we talk about traffic, it's not like we don't want something to be there. But we have a neighborhood of a hundred homes and when they were built, they were supposed to be connected to at least two other streets so that there would be an exit out. And I'm sure you people know the, the whole story behind that as well as I do. Um, that wasn't done. And now it's, it's out of situation. Those other streets have been built up, so it can't be done. So we have no choice but to go in and out that area. So it's traffic and it's the safety of that. And I know you can't now change that we go out, you know, we have another exit out. So that's why personally I get concerned with all of the other stuff adding to the, the traffic, the ability to get in and out, the safety. So I just wanted to make that clear. I appreciate when you, when you make buildings, when you pay attention to the detail. But, um, the traffic and the reality and, and the amount, that's, you know, it, it is a concern to us. So I appreciate you listening. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Susan. Uh, is it Sheila Lord? Sheila. You can unmute yourself or attempt to. I can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, Sheila Lord, 20 Walton Street. I do have concerns about the traffic as well. When I just was listening to the, um, the traffic advisory board, when I asked them about, you know, the different projects on Salem Street that they were talking about, they made it sound like they only, when they do a study, they're only looking at one project at a time. They're not taking into consideration all of the projects that are being proposed right now. So I think that somebody has to look at that as, um, the, the traffic in total of all of these three projects going. And I think I agree with Amy. Enough is enough. I understand that this neighborhood is zoned for business and I get that anything new is going to look better than the, you know, the buildings that are there now, but it is still, you know, there are still people living here. It is still a residential area. And I just think that so much is being jammed into this area. And it is a safety concern with traffic. And I think the studies that were done can't, they weren't done, they were done during COVID, for one thing, and it's still COVID now. School is not in session, you know, the normal day-to-day traffic. People are working from home. It's not a normal traffic flow right now. So to, for somebody to say that a new building with, you know, 30 units isn't going to impact the traffic at all or significantly, I just find that hard to believe. So that is, it, it's a big concern because it takes a long time sometimes to get out of this neighborhood to go either left or right. We're waiting at the top of Walton Street trying to turn out and we can't. So it is, it is a concern. The other thing is the building itself, it, to me, it still looks very commercial. I mean, the black at the top of it, it is, it just looks like a commercial building. And I get that it, you know, what you're saying, it could be an office building, but it isn't. It's a residential building. And it, and somebody, one of the board members last time said it looked like an urgent care. And then, and it does. And I do appreciate that you're trying to make it look as decent as possible. Um, but I still have concerns about the way that it looks and the traffic in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think when we had, um, Lieutenant Anderson here last time, and we did receive a memo, I think they, one of their memos to us accounted for all three of these projects in total. Um, I know we received at least one, the first one probably on its own. But we're, we're this one and the other newer one, uh, further down the road. Um, came to us relatively close to one another. I think they looked at all three. So.
They did look at all three, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Um, so it, it may have been, may not have been stated as such, or the meeting, I, I can't say with Miss Ward, uh, what meeting.
Right, yes. He, he, actually, I asked at the end of the meeting, I asked specifically about that. And he said, because they never know when they do a study, whether any one project is going to be approved or if it's going to move forward so that it's difficult for them to do a study for all of the projects. So he made it very clear that when they did the study, it was not for all three projects. That's what he said. So I'm just, because I asked, would, you know, would it be feasible to do a study including all three projects? And he said that it, it's really hard to do that because, as he said, you nev- they never know which, which projects are going to move ahead, would, are going to be approved and go forward.
Hmm. Lieutenant Anderson said that?
Yes.
Interesting. Because they, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the, the, the study we got from 525 is what included all three of these projects.
Correct.
And, and also that's the one where we went for about an hour and they discussed the formula that they did to, uh, I don't know what, what you'd want to call it, normalize for COVID.
Um, yeah.
That, that is mandated by the state. So both of those were, were taken, all three projects were taken into account. And then being, you know, engineers, I don't think we could just say, well, you know, better than you.
Yeah. So I'm not sure why or what was said at that other meeting, Miss Ward. I'm just, I'm just knowing what was presented to us and it definitely did account for all three. So maybe, maybe it was subsequent to that. I don't know.
Okay.
But I appreciate your feedback and we understand, we get it and we're trying to, yeah, we're, we're trying to do what we can in our charge and then rely on traffic folks to, to give us their expertise in those aspects.
Thank you.
They are the aspects in our, in our peer review board. So, but thank you. Um, okay. Was there anyone else? Let me go back to the participant list. RS.
Yes, hi. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, Rick Stewart, uh, 157 Salem Street. Um, listen, I've lived on Salem Street for over 30 years. Uh, and I have a little history up and down there. In fact, I used to live at 534 Salem Street years ago. Montrose Ice Cream used to be there. Very, very different than today, obviously. The traffic is definitely a lot worse. And I get it, every year there's increase in traffic and all the rest of it, but over the years, you know, I've seen the traffic increase. I know when. I know when Linfield was putting in the new mall up there, there was big discussions about traffic. We drive up and down there. They were smart enough, wherever they figured it out to have UPS turn into Wakefield instead of Linfield because they recognize there's a traffic issue down there and we can talk about this all day, you know. Let's get beyond that. We all know there's a traffic issue down there. To me, one of the questions I have, and I was kind of listening to the discussion earlier about, we have a zone business area. We hired a person for economic development. In order to do that, they need places for businesses to come because that's one of their main goals is to bring businesses to Wakefield. If we're taking the zone business area and we're converting it to residential, that makes that person's job quantitatively more difficult because the amount of area that we're going to have for business development will be consumed by residential. So if the idea, and it seems to be advocated by the board, that in the business district, it is to the benefit of the town to bring in residential housing, reducing the opportunity for business development, why do we have a business development person if the idea is we're just going to be continually bringing in more and more residential into the business area? I find that to be a conflict between the two aspirations the town's looking for. If we're looking to bring in business, we need places for those businesses to go. The opportunity, if there's land that can be developed and we can put in good business opportunities there, it would seem to make sense. And years ago in Salem Street, right up in that area, it started that way. When Montrose Ice Cream closed, they built that nice two-story office building across the street. They put the nice two-story office building behind BS, Sunoco Station. And even the three-story office building, that's kind of next to the next development we're going to talk about. Granted, it's a little bit taller, it's set back decently. That's on the right track. It's a business area, it's being developed for business, it makes sense. But now we've sort of changed from that perspective and now it seems to be the idea is we're going to take the business zone area and we're going to create more housing in there. And it's one thing to say, you know, we need to add some more housing to Wakefield, I get that. But we have a very small section of, of area and it's zone business and we don't have one housing development, we don't have two housing, we don't have three, we don't have four, we don't have five. We're at six now in that very small area. And that's only going to open it up to the few parcels that are left there. They're going to say, why am I not doing this too? So is that entire strip of zone business going to be nothing more than one apartment or condo complex all the way up to the light? How is that balanced with the business needs and our business economic development person to try and bring people to town? We're just consuming all the zone business area for more and more housing. I, I, I see there's a disconnect there between those two. The other piece of the issue is, and I talked about this last time, scope of these projects, they're just too big. That's the problem that we're running into. The current one we're looking at, that top floor, in my personal opinion, if you remove that, I think that would make that building a lot more appealing. It would give better options, it would just be more in tune. If we're going to have a building that's going to be residential, it just looks like it's dropped on top just for, again, to add more square footage for, you know, a better return on investment. The one we're going to talk about next, it's the same thing. We have two office buildings and we're going to try and drop a residential building between it. It just, it, it just doesn't work. Either we're going to have business or we're going to have residential. But to have a zone business area and be consuming it for just residential, and then what we're putting in there, its size and scope is larger because they're still looking for relief, whether it's for, you know, offsets or parking or whatever. We seem to be going down these roads where we're conflicting with two goals of the town. Business development and then trying to do something with housing. And in that one particular area, it's already too many developments to begin with. But now we seem to be talking about, wow, we can even do more of it here because somehow this is what's the best thing to do in this area. Where does it end? At some point, does every single lot in that area get consumed? And then we move to the next business area and we move in there and we start doing the same thing. I just, there needs to be more balance. And I just don't see that happening here. So that's my kind of thirty-plus years on Salem Street, what I've seen, what I see coming and I'm concerned about it. Because at the end of the day, Wakefield just shouldn't be at every place that you come into Wakefield, whether it's from Linfield on that side, or we're talking about coming from Stoneham, down by the train tracks or what's coming over at the head of the lake. I mean, the, the entry in a Wakefield shouldn't be conduvization or apartmentization and that's all that we see as we come into town. Food for thought, that's my two cents. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I really wish you would consider opening up your video so we could see you talk, but I appreciate your, your comments, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Just scrolling the list one last time, going once, going twice. All right, I see no other hands, so we'll close it to public testimony for the evening. Greg, did you have something else you wanted to add? Okay, your audio.
I'm, I'm, I'm back to working, I think.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
All right. All right, board members, anything else?
I agree, we continue this to our next meeting.
January twenty-seventh, okay, that would be January twenty-seventh.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, board members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Tim?
Hi.
Joe?
Yep.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike, okay. All right, this hearing is continued to January twenty-seven. Thank you for the information tonight in the input and we'll talk to you again in two weeks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And once again, Brian, if we can get hard copies in the building department for the updated plans, just, I know they're not final, but at least I can stamp them. Yes, as we go along here and Gil will let me know when they're there. Thank you.
Do we also want samples of materials brought there?
Yep.
Okay, material samples.
Although I don't know how I'm going to get there to look at them.
I was going to say gimpy, what? In the wheelchair by or?
Right, I got a scooter. I hope there's no ice on the ground.
Maybe we can arrange, we can arrange a drive-by.
A drive-by, Eric, good, thanks.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How do we, and, and this is not a question I want to answer, it's just a, something I always think about. How do we get people to understand that we're not the planning component? That we just have to look at what's being presented to us? I mean, I have this discussion in my own house every, all the time, like, why didn't Trader Joe's go in rather than Shaw's? You know, it's like, we look at what's presented to us. We don't get to pick and choose what's presented to us. I, I don't know how we can get that word out to people or have them understand that we're not the planning component. I don't know.
I, I have similar discussions.
I get frustrated with because I want to listen to the public and I hear their concerns. I just sometimes think they, they think we can go, no, you can't do this apartment building because we, the town, are going to build an office building for people to come to. I, I just, it, it always kind of frustrates me a little bit. That's it.
I hear you. I'm sure we've all had similar discussions and coincidentally, I've made the introduction of, of Erin Kokinda, our new Economic and Business Development Director, who's in attendance this evening and hearing all of this and I'm sure her ears are perking up. But it's probably part of her charge and others in the town. It's a collective effort. I don't know that it's all necessarily falls on her new shoulders. But, yeah. I get it. All right, moving right along. The next continued hearing, case twenty-one dash twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, one sixty-eight Lexington Street LLC at five twenty-five and five twenty-seven Salem Street. Brian and team.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Peter, your, Peter Sandus is here tonight and also Bob Zereski, who is the principal of the applicant entity is here, the owner of the property. And we do not have our site civil, Chris Barajas, Chris unfortunately had a surgical procedure and he is laid out. We've, there were some minor changes to his site plan which we, we might not even talk about, but we will be prepared to cover that if we need to. And John, I think, I think, I'm sorry, Peter, I should say, is going to be more the presenter because I think, to refresh the board's memory on this, it's more architectural issues, I think, on this building that the board wanted to see Peter and Steve take a look at and possibly make some alterations and additions of materials and changes in the front door. That was an issue that Amy had brought up to commercial looking. And also wanted to see some renderings of this building from different angles. So I've got to stop sharing this screen. And let me try to get to.
Peter, you there?
I'm here.
Great, you want to kind of take it from here, Pete, and talk to the board about what, what you've done?
Sure.
So this is the right slide or you want, I can?
No, we, we can work it from here with, this is a good slide to look at and I like, I like that we, this time Steve inserted the existing conditions so we can see in the bottom right there how the, the site looks now with the two homes, the way the trees are, the way the brick office building in the front sits. Last time, my take and Brian, I believe too, was that the building sat very tight onto Salem Street. It seemed very overpowering. So we worked with the building going through and taking three feet out of that building from front to back. Now again, we have to do that so that the units, the elevator, the hallways, everything still works, but we were, we were able to do it. No, I, I misspoke. We took one foot out of the building, front to back. The building, the building is very tight that way in how it works and we were able to take two feet out of the parking lane in the lot behind. But what the intent was is to peel, is to push the building three feet back onto the site in off of Salem Street, which we did do. And additionally, we were able to shift the building five feet to the right. And that was because we took three feet out of the building left to right and an additional two feet out of the entry parking lane, driveway that goes into the site. So we're taking the mass of the building, reducing it and then we're taking the reduced building and pushing it back into the right so that I, I felt it helped settle it back in there. Chris Barajas worked on the site plan and then we came back and, and rendered accordingly. Additionally, up on the fourth floor, I was able to take four feet after all those reductions, then an additional four feet out of the fourth floor left to right and pull the whole fourth floor mass in on the building. So the building is substantially smaller by square feet. And in this rendering, you can see we've brought more of the brick into place. We've picked a brick now, we picked a concrete siding for the fourth floor and we've picked our hardy plank siding as well, so we fixed the materials. I felt like this now shows the building setting in there much better, much more comfortably than it did before. Brian, if you can go to the next slide. Here's the building coming in the other direction. It, it, I think this one substantially shows how the fourth floor really does set in. The only projection up there that cannot change is, is the stair tower that's happening about mid-building. This, this now is showing the updated materials on the bays, the use of brick for two stories on the front. The updated front entry and also the building setting back three additional feet on the site. Go ahead, Brian, to the, to the next slide if you would. This, this was an answer to rendering the elevations. So now you can see, if you look to the bottom left, second bay, you can see the, the more residential front entry with AZAC trim, double hung windows, still a glass entry, but again, much softer than it was before, so it looks less like a, like an office building. The, the bays being done in MDO. The siding being used, the brick being used, it's concrete panels up on the upper floor. I think this shows less, the, the, it still allows for the four feet coming in, but it just doesn't read as much, I think, because the stair towers are, are there in the flat. Go ahead to the next slide, Brian. This was a request, I think, of yours, Amy, to render the building from the parking lot side. So you can see, again, that the materials are being carried over, it's not being forgotten when we get to the back. You can see the, the entry here is similar to the front, but this is what the building would look like on the parking lot side. Go ahead to the next slide, Brian. And this was our materials board, we're calling out the brick, the, which is Cambridge Brick veneer, hardy plank siding, which is pearl gray, the concrete rain screen, which is up on the fourth floor. We did a blow up of the entries so that you could see the details providing to make it more residential. Just want to scoot up a little bit, Brian, so I can look, I can read the bottom part. There you go, the Anderson one hundred series double hung windows with transoms in black. These are the light poles, which is a lighter layer fixture, I believe. Black sponges on the building, the standing seam metal roof copper, which is going to happen on the bays. And I can't read the last piece because the photos are in the way. I believe that's the bay material called out on the last part. But this, this is to prevent that confusion between what the rendering colors are showing and what the actual materials are that we're hoping to use on the, on the building. So, so our feeling here was that we were able to take the building, reduce the massing and then and, and the ultimate goal was to place the building in a better spot on the site. And, and I think ultimately get it to look more comfortable as you, when you're in Salem Street.
As long as we're on this slide, can I just ask, we're, we're seeing another dominance of gray and shades of gray.
Yeah.
Any consideration given other colors? You know, on Foundry Street, we brought in a little green, on one seventy-five North, we brought in some yellow, just
Yeah.
Some other color besides gray.
No.
What?
No.
Classic, you put in these other colors and then in five, ten years, they're going to look very outdated. You're going to stick with classic colors so that they stay relevant.
So, Mr. Chair, I can add, I work with Phoenix, this is Steve. I think the board last time had concern that this building in six-ten down the street, we're starting to clash with materials. There were starting to be a repeat between the siding color, the bays. So I think what we're doing in six-ten is doing more what you talked about, the yellows and the greens, kind of bringing that with some different color and then this building coming back with the more gray tone to have that differential between the buildings.
And Amy, I think you're right, it's a very traditional way to, to do it.
I mean, brick certainly is. I'm not going to argue with any amount of brick, you know, that's very classic and timeless, I just. Okay, just my two cents.
Mr. Chair, can I even back up a little bit from starting to talk about the colors? I think this photo and maybe even the first one, I think we'll use the same word that I used last time, it's still shocking for me. You know, this, I don't know, this even more so than some of the other projects seem to be slammed onto this site, you know, you're starting already with the bottom floor, four feet above the sidewalk. And it's, you know, I think you said we moved it back a couple of feet. But it's already, you know, starting at essentially show, chest to shoulder height for most people. Moving a building that's already, you know, four stories back three feet doesn't really do much in my mind. This seems one that, you know, could call for lopping off an entire floor in my, in my mind, making that third floor like the fourth floor. This just seems way too kind of, you know, you're already starting a chest height, we're trying to, we say, oh, we moved it back three feet because we don't want to lose parking. Well, the better answer to me seems to be reduce units, so you can lose parking and move it back and make more space up.
I should mention that we also took four feet out of the height of the building by reducing all the floors and reducing the top floor by a foot. So that's also a pretty major change in what was presented before. I don't know that the renderings really show that because they're rendering, but it, it did, it is done. The building is four feet shorter.
Yeah, I think, I mean, one of the things that really affects this, unfortunately, the site is you're starting already at kind of chest to head upwards. You're walking and driving by. So four feet for a building that's already on top of you. Yeah, maybe significant from a, you know, real estate and architecture standpoint, but it's not really significant from a, you know, regular person from the town walking by or driving by.
I mean, I think it came into discussion before whether we should flip flop and put the parking forward in the building back. But I think from living in the building.
I, I think that's getting even ahead though. I don't, I'm not even talking about flip flop. I think there's just good news for taking a lot more off the building, moving it back a little bit. Because if you, you know, taking, if you take a lot off, you can lose some of the parking, moving it back a little bit. It just seems like we're, you know, I, I had the same discussion last time with, I think I used the same word shocking. And then being told, oh, we moved it back three feet and took it down a couple of feet. You know? Doesn't really change that. Now, this is one to me that could use a drastic, I won't say redesign, because I do like the design elements of it. But a, a, a real hard look at whether this is the right size for the site. I know we hear a lot about other people, people about jamming other projects on, on to sites. And I, I think we usually come to good, pretty good outcomes. But this seems to be, I mean, that picture especially, it's basically looks like it's leaning out from the site. Really lording over everything else that's there.
Well, I can say, just as a comparison, Greg, and for the board. So the project that was approved, the 581 had land area of 24,600 square feet. And 21 units were allowed under the density. That's a 19 unit project. This lot is 28,500, so a couple more thousand square feet. And it's proposing 24 will be allowed, is proposing 21 residential units. So, you know, as far as the density for the lot goes, it's, it's, the one in 581 was actually more.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I think it's, it goes beyond just density. This is like, it's, I mean, look at it, it looks like it's literally jumping out of that site.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. You're not talking units, you're talking the building.
Yeah, the whole project. Not talking density, I'm talking the, the actual project being put there is, is almost leaning off of that site. It feels like it's kind of crowding everything over you. And it doesn't help, I understand that it starts at four feet above the rest of the surrounding. I believe it was four feet, it was something along that.
Some increase there.
Oh, just elevation difference?
Yeah, from the sidewalk to essentially the walkway to the front door. If you're on the sidewalk, it was like, that's a hill right there. I believe they said it was essentially four feet. I think that's what Chris said last time, Chris Rogers.
We can get a clarification from him.
Is there a way to eliminate that elevation change with either a stone wall in back? Or, or sink it or do, do something so that there isn't that four foot? So that the, the, we just grade it differently and do some landscape features that, you know, the parking may be up a little bit or something. But there, there's plenty of ways to bring buildings down. Peter, John?
Well, Chip, I think back, that helps too. Like, that's why I'm saying the reduction, they keep saying, oh, we can't move it back because of parking. But if we could lose parking spaces, you know, if they can figure, however they, I mean, I don't know if it's for us. I know it's not for us to design it, but it just seems like from where it is on the lot and from essentially being four feet above, it's just.
Like, it's, it's, what you're talking about, Greg, is in the character of the shape of the front of the building. Forget the top for the moment. But in the character of the shape of the building, basically, because of the undulation in it, which helps to sort of shrink it to some degree in character. But when you think, when you look at the rest of the buildings that have been there since the 60s and 70s, they're just flat brick boxes, no character at all. So I hesitate to sort of think about, I understand what you're saying about it projecting itself out on the street. But that's in the architectural character. To some degree, it's in the setting, but it's also in the architectural character. And I'd hate to dumb down the architectural character to, to come down to the level where in fact, we've just got these flat brick walls with no character. That's a, you know, it's kind of an ugly street to drive down. It's like driving through, driving through a warehouse district, you know? Just think about off, the office building parks you drive into, basically, they're just straight walls, very efficient, windows right out to the, right out to the finished edges and the like. That, you know, unless they're done really well, they're boring.
I understand what he's saying, but respectfully disagree that it's, it, it is the building. It's not the architecture that, I like the architecture. It's the building. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but it's, it just seems like it's, and it's not the architecture.
And that's what I said last time too. If we lose, if we lose the, if we lose a few units up top, then we, maybe we don't need as much parking in the back and it can get pushed back. I think the building looks beautiful, just not, it's too much for right there. If that was on that other lot, it would be fine. But it's just, it's too much.
Well, we'd like to try to find a way to make it work with the unit count, you know, you know, because that's not the issue, as Greg said. Because, you know, we start chopping units, we, we chop affordability. That's the way the, the calculations go. If you lose two units, one of those is an affordable. And, you know, we'd like to try to, we'd like to try to make that work. So that will be our goal.
Can you remind me of the parking count on this building?
I can, hang on a second. Yeah, it'd be a good idea to look at the site plan to see what might be able to. I think we updated it last time because of the office and you did, and the bedrooms, I think it said we needed 33, so 21 units plus the office, 22. So one and a half is 33.
Yep.
So hold on, let me get the site up that Chris had sent, even though he's not here. This might be helpful to all of us, hang on. There we go. Let me see, okay. Bear with me. Here we go, parking calculations. So 33 are required, we're providing 36.
And there's obviously no other way to reconfigure that parking.
Well, what he already did is, is you can see here, Chris shrunk this aisle down to 22 to allow for the, for the building to be pushed back. And, you know, and it is, the building itself is pretty, I mean, the front door is 22, 22.5 feet from the right away.
And we are beyond, this is Sam Sloan's building here to our left, isn't that the corner of his building, Brian?
So we're Yeah, yeah, we've, we've actually met with this, we, we've corresponded with the Sloans who own this building. And they are supportive of the project. We talked about the distance between the buildings, they wanted to understand that. They, they know what else could go on this site, which they were not excited about, and they support the project. So they actually sent an email to me in that regard. They, they think that, you know, they, you know, you, you talk about offices in the building, you know? The interesting thing is, the, the existing office buildings don't want more competitors for office. You know, they, they like, they like the residential mix with them. So, but, but this is a site plan, we do meet the parking. A board member just with this up, if I may. So say, we convinced them to take off the top story. That's four two bedroom units. That gets rid of potentially six parking spaces. What six spaces allow them to move that building further back on the site? How would that work?
Well, six plus four, because aren't they already four over what they need?
You know, well, we like people to be over what they need, don't, don't we?
Three over.
For people to have more parking, especially along this area.
Yeah, I'm saying required parking, they would, they would be able, we would be able, you know, say you, you, you could get by with four, six fewer ones with four units gone. I mean, yeah, if that whole row of 10 in the back of the building could be eliminated, then the whole building could go back and you just have wraparound parking. But to do that, you know, there'd be a significant reduction in units, right? Not just the top floor, but several others. This building would have to get significantly smaller for that to happen, for, for to have a meaningful impact on the parking, such that the building could move further back.
Okay, but they're the ones who are bringing up that they can't move it back because they're, because of parking. Find another way then. I mean, it's not, I, I'm not trying to just, it's not my suggestion. I'm a lawyer, not an engineer, I understand that.
Okay, Bones.
But they're the ones who said, you know, we can't move it because of parking. I mean, and, and I, I mean, it first off, you can move it a few feet if you take out, or I'm circling my cursor like you guys can see it. You know, these final six spots, you can, I guess, the upper left. Take those out, move it back a few feet.
Right here, Greg.
Yeah, that's off the top of my head. I mean, I'm, so anything helps at this point, right?
Yeah, and again, we don't want to spend the time here designing it and just, you know, just trying to, it sounds like the, the feedback we're giving them is, the building needs to be smaller. And for it to be smaller, it has to be small enough that to make a meaningful impact and.
I would just be clear that some of us are giving them that feedback.
Yep.
Was it contemplated at all?
Fine with the size of the building, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a, I would like to see it lower to the street. And I think that could be discussed.
Which may help.
21 units doesn't bother me in this location.
I was going to ask it, and, and we were talking a little off school because we don't have Chris Rogers, but let's just assume we can take the building down the four feet. So it comes to, to sidewalk level. And, and we can do, as Amy suggested, we can do some with a retaining wall in the back to, to make up the difference. Assuming that can happen, I guess I'd ask you, Greg, do you feel like it would, it would sit on the site better?
I think it would help quite a bit. And to be clear, Chip, I'm not talking about number of units. That, that wasn't even mine when I spoke to the last meeting. I don't, I think that was one scenario we discussed. But that's where everyone immediately went was, oh, we have to reduce the building size, we have to reduce.
Oh, I mean, I, I think if you say take away parking spaces, you can take away parking spaces, but the only way to do that is to reduce the numbers.
But again, they brought that up. I, all I started with was this building seems like it's jumping out from the site onto you. Can we do anything with it? Oh, we can move it back, to move it back, we have to lose parking spaces. So all these jumps, you know, there's got to be a creative way. And maybe, we didn't even talk about taking it down the four feet last meeting. Maybe that's, you know, a way to get there. And again, like you said, it is only a few people, so if this is.
No, there may be others, but I, I just don't, I, I get concerned when we lump everybody together.
We're not, we just, we have to feel comfortable moving past, you know, this is our second or third hearing on this, so we just have to.
Right, we either have to, again, tell them to go do a whole new redesign. And I hear Greg's comment that it's kind of leaning out over the street. I, I kind of agree with that too. And certainly the elevation shows it that way. And I think some of that feel is because it's four feet above the street level and has a, has a prominent front. For one that has a prominent front as well, I understand that.
Was it contemplated, Brian, at all to have any type of retail or anything in the bottom?
Well, we have that one office, Amy, if you remember.
But I mean, something across where Greg's saying, like, where you're kind of looking into the whole front of it. I'm just wondering, like, restaurant or something like that, where it's also going to be a beneficial aspect to the town? And then it kind of takes away that looking into somebody's apartment.
Let me get to that elevation, Amy, so you can.
Because isn't the apartment just a small little thing on the corner?
Yeah, it's one unit.
Yeah.
This is the front elevation, right, Pete?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the, the problem, the problem you have with, with, you know, putting that type of use in here, then you get into a total different animal on the parking
Parking.
requirements, because you know, the, the problem that's been noted before, we need, you know, I think we need to meet the parking requirements here, not only to comply with zoning and to comply with the neighborhood concerns on overflow parking, but for the rentability of this building. And the other thing too, you know, for the affordable housing components, actually 610 and 525 work very well together because 610 is going to be a condominium building for sale and 525 is a rental building. So, you know, it really gets two different elements of the need for the affordable housing. But the point is, it was mentioned, I got off track there for a second. The, there's no room for overflow parking here. So, you know, like when, you know, for example, on, you know, 175 North Ave, you know, there was, there was room for some variation on the parking because you had all the parking across the street for the, you know, at night for the restaurant. But there's, there's really offsite, there's nowhere for anybody to go here.
Okay.
You know, the other thing too is, you know, that stuff's all going to come back. But, but right now, you know, with COVID, and we don't know how long the effect is going to be. You know, unfortunately, there's not a lot of restaurants that are looking to open up right now.
Okay.
Sadly.
Greg?
Yes.
When you look at that rendering, looking down the street, that new one, if the, if the upper floor was pushed back more, do you think that would be less, seem like it's less projecting onto the street?
So I almost think it'd be more like what we did with Tarrant Lane where we stepped the second to top four back, because the top floor is already, you know, back.
Greg, which rendering you want up, this one or the?
Yeah, sure, or whatever Jim was referring to.
That's the, this is the one to me that looks like it's falling out onto the street.
All right, so, so what happens if we ask them to look at pushing that back so that instead of it setting back on this, on the highway side, it's flush on the highway side, thus pushing it further back off the, off the main street?
Yeah, that certainly could work. I think one, one thing, when I was talking about Tarrant, if you remember Tarrant Lane, we did almost like a two step. Then it would, I don't know, I mean, this may, building may be way too small for that to even be, uh, I don't even start that type of project, but.
Yeah, I think that has too much implication in the rest of the layout, basically. Like, because I was, the other thing, the other thing I'm just looking at is, there's a possibility, I suppose, for a few more parking spaces, one, two, three, maybe three or four near the front of the building, just at the entry. Because it seems to be a fairly wide pass of, part of landscape there, area there. But even if you took those out of the back of the site, it's still not enough to, to make a difference, to push the building back further. And then there's, then there's a question, if you build a building a little bit long, wider on the street, making one of the units a little bit larger, you know, what, does that work? Well, it really doesn't when you look at the plan of the layout for the units. So you, you see in, in the front there where the, where at the, where you go through the main, where you hit Main Street, basically, or Salem Street, should I say, there's, there's possibly some parking spaces in there, maybe, but not by much.
In, in this area, Jim?
Yeah, yeah. It may mean the It may mean the building has to move a little bit to the left or rotate a bit or something.
Yeah, I I think we've given a lot of feedback at this point, so maybe it's time to just let them. Go back, meld the comments and. See what they can come up with. But I think they're hearing that it needs to be significant as to Greg's and Amy's comment, not just. Two feet here, one feet here, that there's got to be a definite different feel.
From the street perspective?
No.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
From the street perspective. Okay. Uh, Peter, do you have any, um, any initial thoughts on the possibility of moving that top story back?
So there there definitely is, uh, the ability on the top story, um, where the bedrooms project. Um, to peel them in a little bit, I don't know visually if that's going to show on our rendering, but there, there's definitely the ability and. To Greg's point, the the center component of the building, we can look at it here, so we see the walkway come into the entry.
Here.
Center rectangle. There's a possibility there to pull several, pull that in several feet. Not as, I'm not as convinced yet that I can do it on the right and left corners, but I definitely can do it in that center. I I was looking at it while while you were all this. Um, so the, those first three floors of units can push in.
How about the top floor, Peter, is that, how far is that from the, how how's that work up top with Jim and talking about moving, moving it back?
See if I can answer that. Um. So I'd say in the top floor, um. There's a possibility to take maybe, definitely a foot, but def- possibly two feet.
Peter, your problem's gonna be the elevator. You might end up having to put the elevator on the other side of the card or all the way up through the building, so it gives you a little more latitude.
Yeah, yeah. But if we hold, if we hold the rear components of the building as we have, maybe we can do these adjustments in the front, so everything forward of the, of the center corridor. Seems like we could.
Um. Okay.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe that in with working with getting the building lower, so getting the building lower and pushing the front facade in.
Exactly.
As we really are held on the right and the left by the plan, because of setback from parking. Uh, et cetera, et cetera, right?
And then we can talk to Chris to see what he can do on the, on the topography.
Correct.
Yeah. Good. Mr. Chief, I could ask you if we could possibly, uh, if Peter could correspond with Mr. McCain? Well, it helps because.
When are you guys gonna start paying him?
We'll pay him, he'll get much.
No, we don't want to go there. I don't want to go there.
Uh, to recuse himself.
Right. No, Jimmy, if if you're okay, again, working offline if there's anyone else.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds like he's got the time.
Model ship building will be put on hold.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got four, the four is too many already.
All right, so Brian, what else? Were you planning to cover tonight? It sounds like we, we.
That was it, um, because that was a big, that's the big thing, I think that's the hurdle that, um, we we need, we, the applicant needs to, um. Focus on before they go further on anything else.
Okay, I'm just looking at my notes and that's kind of what we intended to cover tonight. So. All right. Um, if nothing else, board members will open up the public testimony. If any member of the public wishes to ask a question.
Mr. Chairman, can we keep public testimony to architecture since that's all we covered tonight, not get into traffic and everything else?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
So if any member of the public wishes to ask a question, make a comment about what we've heard tonight for testimony. On this project, uh, we would welcome that at this time, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I will call on you. Susan Wetmore, please go ahead.
Hi, Susan Wetmore, twelve cents of drive, I just want to say that I totally agree with the. With the comments about it being too close to the sidewalk and being very shocking or imposing, so I do appreciate you, um, you know, considering and and talking about or. Some re- remediation to that, um. But, and I don't know, uh, these are still all two-bedroom apartments? Is that correct?
There's a mixture.
I think there's a mix. I think there's one, one, right? It's mostly two, right, Brian?
I think there's one office and the rest, all the apartments are two, or am I incorrect about that?
One office, one one-bedroom and twenty-two-bedroom.
Twenty-two-bedroom, okay. Well, so my comment did not, you know, traffic's another day, but. Um, with twenty-two-bedroom apartments, I know that by, you know, you only need thirty-three spaces. I I just feel like there's still going to be, with two-bedroom apartments in this area, not really walkable to anything. That, you know, there's going to be two cars in each, so I still am concerned about the amount of overflow, um. Because of the two-bedroom situation, but I appreciate the the change or the look to change, um, the footprint or whatever you want to call that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Scrolling the list here. At once, going twice, seeing no other hands. We'll close with the public testimony for the evening, again, there'll be other opportunities at future meetings when we get into other aspects of the project.
I move that we continue this to January twenty-seventh.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Chip?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Thank you, unanimous, all right, thanks again for the info tonight, the updates, and we look forward to meeting with you again in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How you doing, Amy?
Hmm, all right.
Hanging in.
Trying.
All right.
Is this showing?
Yeah.
All right, we're now moving on to new hearings for the evening. Uh, we have three, twenty-one dash twenty-eight, Town of Wakefield Albion Cultural Exchange at nine and eleven Albion Street. Who is here representing this application?
Uh, my name's Chris Carino, I'm here, uh, the chairperson of the Albion Cultural Exchange Committee, here to, uh, represent our sign request.
Okay, thank you, Chris, welcome.
Yeah, eighteen Central Street, I think you want to address this.
Thank you. Okay. So the floor is yours, do you have, um, um, this is for bracket signs, so do you have a, a plan or something you can share, just so folks can visualize it?
Okay, uh, I was only impressed that all that information was in your packet or delivered to your committee? No?
It was, but we always like the applicants to. Share.
Because we have, because we have public.
Yep. Um, let's see. Let's see if I can quickly find a copy of it.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great, I just was, wasn't aware that I was to have that prepared for y'all. But I can give you a a quick overview, um, while you're looking for it.
Go ahead, Chris.
So my name is, uh, Chris Carino, I'm the chairperson of the Albion Cultural Exchange Committee, we're currently running, uh, the nine-dash-eleven Albion Street Building. And, uh, our mission of our committee is to promote art, culture, and community. And we're converting, uh, a nineteen-ten post office, uh, into our sort of, uh, art incubation space slowly but surely as we get funding. And we're at the point now, uh, where we're ready for some signage, we've been in existence for about six years, maybe going on seven. And we have a lot of trouble giving people directions to our building. Because we don't have any signage, uh, currently on the building or really anything that indicates our name. About, uh, in the summer of twenty-nineteen, we, uh. Established a new logo and we've been living with it for a while, and then, uh, we got to the point where we had the funding. And, uh, the timing seemed right to put on a, uh, put on a sign, and, uh, we consulted with. Uh, Bob Sardella of Sardella Signs, as well as, uh, Jim McCain, the Design Review Board or Design Review Committee. About what would be appropriate, and we've gone through several iterations and solicited feedback in many different forums. Including the Town Council, uh, the Design Review Board, uh, our, our committee, some other places. And we really think that we've come up with a design that, uh, is in scale with the building and would look appropriate. We went through a few design iterations that we didn't think were right, and through the help of Mr. McCain. And Mr. Sardella, uh, we have come up with something that we think you'll all appreciate. And, uh, I'm here to answer any questions on that, uh. Moving forward, we'd, uh, we seek your, uh, approval to, uh, be able to install this sign, and like I said, we think it's in in in, uh, character with the neighborhood. And will benefit, uh, downtown in a positive way.
Stay, stay on that, stay on that one, Dave.
Yeah, and you just, okay.
So, um, on the fourth of November, basically, the Design Review Board met. And discussed this, this project, basically, obviously. There's no real sign band on this building, except that the cast one, it's really at the roof line. And it's a very narrow street, obviously, so their request to have a, a large bracket sign. Instead of a horizontal wall sign anywhere on the building seems most appropriate and most attractive to this, inappropriate to the building. Um, so besides the fact that this is not the nine-square-foot sign that normally is allowed. This is a thirteen-point-five sign, basically, thirteen-point-five. Square feet worth of sign, basically, it's proportionally correct to the building, it makes a lot of sense for this building, it will be. As they propose, lit at night as well, um, it's also because of the character of the architecture of the building, it's higher than allowed. Uh, normally a sign like this wouldn't be allowed any more than fourteen feet in the air, this is seventeen foot, three inches in the air. But it's the appropriate location to mount this and is on a nice bracket sign at the same time. So there's two, um, two things here that the, that this group needs, basically. Is to allow a larger sign and allow a higher sign, and because it's a bracket sign, basically, it comes under special permit. So the board is recommending the design that's in this package. To go forward for these people, basically, it's appropriate to the building, it's appropriate to the location, appropriate because of the location it's in at the same time, so. We're recommending approval of the sign.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Any comments or questions from board members, other board members, I just want to scroll up and look at the sign detail, that's the. Looking at it straight on. But the height seems right because it's above that. Half, half moon window there. You'd have to put it right in that white area above the door, and that's probably even too low. But, so that seems appropriate.
Go to the first, go to the first one, Dave, it shows the whole sign.
Are the, are the lights specked on this, in these? The lights are specked right there, so we're okay with.
Yes.
That, that style.
Yes.
And are the Kelvin, are the Kelvin noted, noted on it?
It's a same, it's a similar one that we approved, uh, use of, um, on the, um. Basement storage space, uh, bracket sign that, uh. Uh, where the old CBS was.
Yeah, no, I don't see the Kelvin noted, it just says LED indirect lighting, uh. We would just want to. See that. Or note that, uh, Chris, just, we look for his temperature range on the lights, you know, with LED, they can be soft or, you know, blue or bright.
We're looking for soft.
Like twenty-seven to thirty-three-hundred Kelvin range, that's that softer range.
Okay. I believe we, we did have discussions on this, I don't know if it's in this packet or which format, format it's on, but we're, we're happy to go with the recommendation of the board.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I'm telling the fact that it came from the design review. But I don't see it on this slide, this would be the best place for it, but it's not here. Could be noted as part of the special permit as a condition, um.
That's fine.
Okay, any other comments, questions, board members?
I like the, um, the top of it, how it mirrors the. The windows of the building, it looks nice, the, um, the letters that are on there, those are going to be raised?
Slightly, yes.
Okay, the, the smaller letters too, where ideas happen, or is that on the?
Uh, that's a question I'd have to ask Bob, I believe they're raised up just a smidgen.
Okay.
They looked like they, they are by the cross-section, it's the left of it.
Okay.
And to your, to your note on the, the design of the logo, that was like a four or five-month process. Really went through and anybody who's been involved with logo designs, we went through like three hundred different versions. And the, uh, the archway was considered important, as well as the keystone on the top of it, and so we wanted to keep that all. You know, all in line with with what we're doing, we had a bunch of other options, but this one seemed to make the most sense, everybody. Really appreciates, uh, the windows and 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 just the building in general, we're really fortunate. To really have access to this, there's a lot of people doing what we're doing that. Couldn't even imagine getting to where we're at, uh, at tonight, so we're very fortunate for our building and we think that our logo, uh, pays tribute to, uh. You know, the architecture.
Yeah, thank you guys, did a nice job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, if you go to the last page, there is some sort of speck on the light, I can't really read it in the, uh, printout. Hopefully it's. More clear.
I'm not sure that's the, oh, yeah, okay.
That's the light, I, like you said, I don't know that the Kelvin is noted.
Uh. It's blurry, I'm just looking for. Temperature or color.
Yeah, it's.
It's three hundred K or six hundred K. Oh, that's when ordering it says, um.
Yeah, it doesn't look it.
Can you zoom in?
Well, it's blurry already.
You can see it, yeah.
Oh, it does say.
What?
Yeah, it says when ordering, please specify color thirty K or sixty K.
So you'd want the thirty K.
No, that's the color, the, that's the color of the fixture.
Is it, oh.
No, it says color, temperature.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll condition it, just to be clear, I mean. I don't think, I think we're okay with the light and the sign and the bracket, you know, it's just, it's all right, we got to. Part of this is special permit, we can put a condition on it and just note that. Yeah. Desire temperature range. And, uh, okay. Um.
Well, thirty K is between twenty-seven-hundred and thirty, so.
Right in the middle, actually.
Yeah. Um. As far as corresponds, we did receive a letter from the, uh, fire department. Um, no objections. To the project, so just for the record there. Okay, anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I'm assuming the lights will shut off for like ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night, or is it timed?
We haven't specified it, but we're more than happy to.
Yep, definitely, yeah.
Yeah.
Good point, so conditions. During the temperature.
I am not particularly swayed by either.
Thirty-three-hundred K. Um, so what's, what's reasonable, Chris, what do you think? Normally, like with businesses, we're half an hour after closing to opening, you know, before opening, if these different businesses are closed at. Nine, night, open at, you know, seven in the morning kind of thing, so we'll.
Eleven o'clock was, was stated out loud, I think that's completely fair, we have some events that go late. Uh, but we're, you know, we're happy to conform to what the board thinks, but if we could go with eleven o'clock, that'd be great.
I think where they're located at eleven would be fine.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, lights off by eleven, okay? And if event does run later, it's fine, it's just.
Yeah.
Nobody's, the idea, the idea is that they're not left on all night, that's all.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, board members? All right, Jim, are you gonna, uh, recuse yourself on this one, I think it's typical, because you've. Through the Design Review Board.
I will.
Okay. Uh, so. Uh. Tap Tom on this one. Um, all right, before we go there, because it sounds like we're probably done with comments. Um, if any member of the public wishes to ask a question or make a comment. Please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I will call on you. Not seeing any hands, we'll close with the public testimony. So we need.
Chairman, I move that we grant a special permit for the sign for the cultural group as presented to, as presented to us by Sardella Sign on the plan stated ten thirty twenty twenty um, with two conditions. Uh, one, well, one would, that we allow the sign to be thirteen point five square feet as compared to the nine. And we allow to hang it at seventeen feet as compared to what's allowed in the district.
Seventeen three.
Seventeen three?
Yep.
Okay.
There's a both fourteen.
With two conditions, one is that the lights will turn off by eleven o'clock at the latest. Uh, and two, that the wattage of the lights will be between twenty seven hundred and thirty three hundred K.
That's your motion?
I'm pretty sure, yes.
Second.
Okay, discussion? So Jim, just to be clear, they've applied for a special permit. And the relief, the additional relief can be granted under that one special permit in addition to, as part of granting a special permit, right?
Yeah, you've got to grant, you're granting a special permit to have, one, a bracket sign. All right. Two, you're granting, you're granting a larger sign than, than is needed, is required under one ninety dash one hundred D two B.
Yeah.
Go to three hundred, to go to, to go to three thirteen and a half square feet. And then finally, basically, you're granting a higher elevation for the top of the sign.
They wanted to take the building.
I'm just making sure we didn't need a separate variance kind of vote, separate from a special.
No, we'd usually lump signing altogether.
I just want to double check. And I'm going to continue to try to mute whoever keeps coming off mute.
Whoever C H Y M is.
C H Y M, please stay off mute, stay on mute. Disrupting the meeting. Thank you. Okay, that's all. I just want to be clear before we proceeded with the vote that we were good. Okay. Um, any other discussion? All right, all voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. So Chris, you have your special permit. Uh, we just need to file a decision. Again, I don't know if you're familiar with the process. Um, I can work with you offline as the applicant and representative. We'll draft a decision, get it filed. Once it's filed, there's an appeal period, um, twenty day appeal period. And once that's over with, then you can apply for a special, a building permit to proceed and get the sign. Okay?
Fantastic. Appreciate your time.
Okay, I'll work with you.
Thank you. Good luck, Chris.
I'll work with you, Chris, through Gal, and we'll be in touch. All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yep, have a good night. Moving along, next on the agenda, twenty one dash twenty nine, thirty and thirty one, three separate applications for M Bar Wakefield LLC at five hundred Main Street.
Okay.
Okay. Ready, Mr. Chip?
I am. I'm just contemplating my options with the person who keeps coming off mute, disrupting our meeting. Like, I think I can send him to timeout. Okay, yes, Brian, please, please, right, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing M B A R Wakefield LLC, uh, who is, which is the owner of property known and numbered as five hundred Main Street. Um, with me tonight on behalf of the applicant is Robert Santinelli. Bob, are you here? I know he is. I saw him. It's like Hollywood Squares, um, looking for Bob. Oh, there he is.
Okay.
He's there. Great. Bob. Uh, the board is familiar with Bob. Bob owns a lot of property in the downtown area of Wakefield. Um, and he's very vested in downtown and has been a great corporate citizen. Uh, Bob has purchased the property at five hundred Main Street, which is across from, pretty much across from the middle school, um, fall fields. Um, it's the old Napa site. Um, and it was auto leasing and used car sales there. And then in the back of the building was an auto repair. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a mishmash uh, that was going on on that site for years. Um, and I think it's a good thing for the town that Bob has purchased them and he actually owns it at this point. Um, and he's looking to redevelop it for commercial purposes, um, which we'll get into the detail of. Also, uh, with us tonight is Tom Chiyunda. Uh, Tom, are you here?
I'm here, Brian.
Great, thank you.
Good evening.
Tom is our architect. And Scott Thornton is here, who is our traffic consultant. We just wanted to have Scott available in case any questions came up. Uh, we've submitted our um, traffic report to your board and also it's gone to Traffic Advisory. Um, and we're waiting to get a meeting scheduled with them. Lieutenant Innocent said he's going to get that scheduled as soon as he can. But we thought it would be good to have Scott here. Anyways, um, at this point. Um, so with that said, let me, if I may, bring up some plans.
Hey, Brian, can you hear me?
I can, Bob.
Yeah, I just want to say good evening to everybody. I know it's kind of late. I want to thank the board and the board members for the opportunity to present our plans for five hundred Main Street. It's a redevelopment of basically a vacant commercial building, as Brian said, it won't repeat at all, but bunch of automotive properties. It's been vacant for two years and uh, the other one portion, it was used car sale dealership. So we intended to demolish the existing vacant building and construct an attractive standalone, single story uh, twenty five hundred square foot branch building for banks and in there. And the bank intends to provide their customer services through indoor tellers and one single lane outside ATM. So that's in a nutshell. I don't want to take too much time. It's pretty late. If any general questions, I can answer now or just let Brian go with the slides.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome. Yeah, we'll let Brian or whoever's going to speak to the slides and we'll see where the discussion goes from there. Yep.
Perfect. Let me shrink this down a little bit. Okay. So this is, to familiarize the board, this is, I'm going to, with my cursor, this is the five hundred Main Street was originally comprised of all of this property going all the way down to Richardson Street. Um, and running along the old railroad tracks where hopefully someday we're going to have a rail to trail out back. Um, and this is, this is really the existing conditions plan. There was a lot of used car sales going on in this part of the lot. This was the big Napa building up front for the auto parts. And then there was auto repair uh, that was taking place in, in this part of the building. Is going to be, to be completely raise everything that is on the lot. And what we've had an opportunity to do, we've already gone before the planning board. Uh, the lot has been subdivided. So now there are two lots. Um, there's lot one over here, and you can see the old, how the old building fit in to be removed. Lot two over here. Um, and they both meet all of the requirements of the business owning district, frontage area, et cetera. Um, and what we're proposing, where our development is going to be, it is going to be on lot two uh, for the bank that Santan Diaz Branch Bank, which Bob talked about that we're proposing. Um, lot one is going to be developed time. Um, Bob is currently, um, it's anticipated that that will also be a commercial type retail food, right, Bob? You want to?
Mercantile, something.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but Bob, as you know, Bob, uh, well, he's very particular about um, who, you know, he wants to do a bill to suit here. So he just doesn't want to build something and then try to rent it. He wants to find a good user for him uh, in the town and, and make sure that they fit in. So this lot will be kept vacant uh, initially and later, later developed separately. Um, what we're proposing is Bob had mentioned is a twenty five hundred, uh, one story um, Santan Diaz branch um, that, um, we think will fit very well into the site. Um, it will have an entrance only from Richardson Street, no exit. Um, but it can have entrance and exit from Main Street. Um, there's a drive up being proposed. That's why one of the special permit requests that we have. Um, and the drive up is not for a, um, teller. It is for an ATM machine that will be connected to the building. But you can see, you can drive around. What we're proposing is to, we have, also have another special permit to allow parking on another lot because we want to put, uh, encroach our parking spaces on the other lot. Uh, it's Bob's anticipation that, um, the, the eventual size of the development uh, that he will propose here will, it won't be affected by this encroachment of the parking spaces. Um, and, you know, quite frankly, we're doing that at our, at our own peril, but we think it works for the bank and it works for the lot at this point. And then we will just have to design around it um, when we, um, go to develop, uh, the lot next door.
Right?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, they might be interested to know that, uh, we've executed declaration of reciprocal easement agreement with covenants, conditions, restrictions, restrictions, thirteen pages, so that either either tenant on either property can use the other facility, basically, the other property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, certain spaces we assign to the bank and they may also park in the other site once it's later developed and vice versa.
Yeah, we would, we would do a modification of this permit to the extent necessary when that, when, when we go to deal with this lot. So that's fine. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, this is, this really just, you know, shows a proposed, uh, building in more detail. It, it deals with the drainage aspect of it. We got a memo from the Department of Public Works today. I've sent that off to Paul and our site civil engineer to review, Paul Fanocchio, who's us, uh, surveyor. So obviously, we, we don't have comment on that point on, on that, um, on that memo at this point, but, uh, we will, and you, as usual, I'm sure we'll address uh, the matters that were laid out in that memo.
Yeah, we got it today too, and there's twenty odd points in there. So, yeah, we'll be looking for some feedback. Yep, thank you.
Okay. Uh, this is just more construction detail and the drainage stuff that, um, Attorney McGrail does not fully understand. So we will not get into it all. I'll leave that to the, to the engineers. So, so that's the site. I'm, I'm happy to move on to the to the architectural, unless the board members want me to stay here, Mr. Chair, before I do that.
Again, this, sorry, go ahead, Amy. I was just going to preface it with, this is our, your initial presentation. There'll be other meetings most certainly on this project. So, um, this is good for an overview. Let's take some initial comments and then move on to architectural.
Okay. One just quick thing that I'm noticing, the, when it has a queuing in from Richardson, how it's a little tight there. Um, my one suggestion, having worked in a bank and knowing that the, um, the lines for, even if it's just an ATM can get long sometimes, especially a bigger bank like this, is putting it on the outside of that, um, I don't know what's there. It looks a bit median or something right there is having the ATM on that side and having the lines, the people that are going to go to the ATM go on the right side and the left side be the side that goes, is for traffic. I know it makes it harder to manage the ATM that way, but I think just as a, a flow, especially when there's, um, school getting out, that area gets really busy. Um, I just don't know if that would make more sense to switch it over to that side.
I will, we'll, we'll talk to Santan Diaz. I know that, um, it's somewhat critical, I think, to have that ATM connected to the building for security purposes. Um, you know, because that's
Brian, pardon me. I'm asking if Scott Thornton's still on from the net.
He is. Yep. Scott, are you there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, uh, Brian and Bob. And, uh, yeah, I, I think, you know, it, it may be more of a, of a operations issue with the bank as to where the, the teller machine is located. But, uh, but I think it's, it is something that, that we can, uh, take a look at. I'm, I'm not sure that the, the, you know, it, the, there may be some additional spacing requirements for the ATM machine if it's, if it's located further from the building. So it's something that we have to look at.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely not ideal to have to go out and service it every day when it's out there, especially when it's cold. But just thinking, you know, that's where I pack when I pick my daughter up every day and I know how crazy it gets over in that area. So for a safety standard, standpoint.
Okay.
Ryan, so why didn't you, instead of drawing a straight line between the two properties, why didn't you, you know, take a jig in the line, basically include the parking in one site as opposed to writing up some sort of share agreement?
Well, and we, don't forget, Bob, I mean.
We did have an initial plan and it had a jig in it and it just didn't look right.
The good thing, Jim, is, you know.
Makes more sense to come right down the middle and we've already done the reciprocal agreement, thirteen page agreement that just, uh, makes it, in essence, for usable purposes, one site. And, and the straight line, you know, is really not consequential, except that it makes it an equal, you know, quarter acre each, a little over quarter acre.
Well, it, it just, it just looks like, you know, okay, I bought this site, I divided it in half, and then I've come up with a client that needs more than, more than half. And so I'm going to, I'm going to basically stick my nose over to the next guy's property, but I'm going to have an agreement where in fact I can utilize that space.
Well, we looked at a zig before, uh, we wanted, we didn't want the zig going down the middle of the driveway entrance. And, uh, and then to make it somewhat equal, it just moved to the left and went straight, um, straight east.
Yeah, and don't forget, you know, the, the luxury that we have is, it's not an agreement with the other owner. Bob owns the, he owns the other lot.
Yeah, but who knows, who knows what history brings to us?
Well, but that's why, you know, what I'm saying is, once we figure out what's going to happen here, this might change a little bit. That, you know, we can always change that line.
Yep, as he said, Jim, it's at their peril. So, and it's not before this, and it's not before this board. It's at their peril.
Just rails.
Trying to understand the agreement a little bit. Is it filed with deed? Is that something that would run with the land?
I couldn't quite hear the question.
Is the, just trying to understand that agreement a little bit to understand even how this parking works. Is that agreement filed? Does that with the deed? Does that run with the land at all? Or like, is it, is it a sign of all? How does that work if one of these two lots is sold?
Uh, if the lots are sold, the agreement stays in place, reciprocal easement.
Oh, it's an easement?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We were just saying mutual agreement. That was what we were just.
Agreement with, um.
Got it. Okay, understood.
Okay. Any other comments on the site?
Is that on the site going to be cleaned up?
Uh, yeah, we're they, we're going to demo the building, raise the building, and you have to leave it in a kind of, uh, acceptable condition to be, uh, buildings packed to fight apartment, et cetera. So, yeah, there won't be any rubble, whatever.
So Bob, how, how, how is that empty lot going to be left? Are you going to fence it? What are you going to do?
Oh, probably have to be fenced. Fence in the front, perhaps, uh, or we thought of putting, um, the, uh, the barriers, you see, the concrete barriers you see in a highway, just putting those down for now.
How long? I mean, I know you can't judge how long it's going to be till you do something with it. I guess one of my biggest concerns with an empty lot is whether it's fenced, whether it's barriered, whatever it is, it, it just is really detrimental to the neighborhood to be right. I know the building's big and ugly, but an empty lot, I'm not sure, without grass or anything else, I would suggest you might want to think about at least looming and roughly seeding or doing something that could be maintained so that it doesn't become an eyesore to the town.
Well, maybe if you allow me to put parking spaces in there temporarily until we find somebody because, you know, from my perspective, it doesn't make sense to keep it vacant. Not a good return investment. So, you know, I'm often, and in fact, I can't disclose who we're negotiating with, but we're negotiating with several parties. One of the nonprofit. And, uh, we just have to wait for certain, certain things to fall in line. And if they do, we do forward. If they don't, we don't. In the meantime, uh, if you have suggestions or there are regulations in the town, I'm happy to abide by them. I know when you, there's a rule about when the buildings are vacant for a while, by, uh, uh, Brian, you have to do certain things to the building to maintain it while it's vacant.
Uh, I, well, I mean, that.
For that, there may be a bylaw for just a vacant site too.
Yeah, I mean, Bob, the whole building's going to be raised, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a vacant lot, um, you know.
I just don't want it to look like a vacant lot.
No, no, I understand.
I know Bob wants to get it rented and moved, and I get that, but it's a weird time. Who knows whether it's gonna be months or years?
The point's well taken, Mr. Tabell. I I understand. You don't want a blighted lot in the middle of downtown.
No, Nerdos and Tander want a blatant lot next to them.
Understood. Yeah, well, Bob and I will talk about that.
Yeah.
Maybe an exchange would like.
Yep. Bob?
I said perhaps a cultural exchange would consider putting a mural on a uh, on a flat.
Well, you know. Mural?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Art, you know.
All right, if there's nothing else on the site, why don't we move on to architectural?
Well, I I had one quick question. Maybe it's not a site thing, but.
Okay.
I want, didn't we condition a crosswalk in that area with Five Bennett Street?
It's there, isn't it?
Well, the the uh, the the piece that came in from the Department of Public Works, was it today, Brian?
Yes.
Yearing Department. Um, they want us to put all new crosswalks in there, which we're probably gonna have to do because. The the town crosswalk is actually on my land. And they realized that finally, and they wanna get that resolved. So I'm not sure. We'll have to get Paul Finocchio and the engineering department to figure out how they're gonna do that, but there will be. Uh, ADA accessibility, you know, at the curb cuts and so forth and so forth.
Brian, you also have to look at the Five Bennett Street. Project, because we had.
That's right, and and.
Money set aside for islands and also, which I think is what Tom's referring to.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely, and the town administrator has taken that over because if you remember. Because of the envision project, he did not want that done right away.
Correct, but we, it, there's still money for that, and we need to make sure that this and that is coordinated.
Correct.
So DPW might not even know that.
So they mentioned that also. They want it coordinated with the um, the envision and also with the um, bike trail.
Yep, there's a lot of points in that letter. They did note a few of these things, so. They did. All right, anything else? Thank you. Architecturals or elevations, yeah?
Yep. All right, this is gonna be, just be able, maybe I can open these.
So why are you doing that, Brian?
I'd have to wake me up shortly, Mr. Chairman.
Do my best.
Just, Brian, just curious, kind of tangential. I mean, there's a Santander right downtown. Does this, is just an additional site, or is there anything that you can speak of?
I'll let Bob address that.
Oh, okay, just.
I don't have all the details on that either, but I do know that the, the uh, the Santander building is functionally obsolete. They don't use the ground floor because the roof leaks and water comes through from the fourth. Or down to the third floor, and they don't use the second floor. So it's a legacy from uh. The Wake, the old Wakefield Trust Company that they have a four-story building. That's uh basically inadequate for what they need. So whether they, they have uh, lot lease, commercial leases, they have state over rights. When they do something else, whether they've done that or executed a. Short-term extension or whether they'll keep them both open for a while. I don't think they'll do that, but I'm not really privy to the information. It's bank information. Playing those, you're ready.
Well, I can, I can confirm that 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 would be the case. They'd be moving that location to this new location.
Oh, good.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Okay, I did know.
Right.
Just curious, something that might have been in the works, having two branches so close to each other, but yeah. Thanks.
I'm gonna try to.
Start to say him. Along with your lovely mailbox.
Can you um, can you, can you, can you see that?
We can see your mailbox.
Oh, all right, hold on. Don't look too close. Can you see these yet? No?
Not yet. Oh, they started to render and then they went away.
Oh, all right. All right, let me try to, Tom, do you wanna kinda? Take over here and what we're doing?
Sure, um.
Tom, do you, Tom, do you have an ability to share your screen? It might be easier.
Uh, I think so.
All right, let me stop sharing. It's gonna be easier for you to do it, because that way you, you can bring up what you want. So uh. Tom, would you pronounce your last name so I don't absolutely destroy it?
Tudina.
Thank you. Uh, Tom is our architect, and um, we've been working with on this, and so I'm gonna let him. Take over the screen and.
Mm hmm.
Probably be more, a lot more timely and efficient and.
Tom, you should, you should be able to grab the screen chair, Tom, everyone in the meeting room should, so.
Tom?
All right, yes.
Yeah, could you just give him a thirty-second background on uh. The company and your um, experience with uh Santander and banks and.
Sure, um, the company is DRL Architects. We um, for the last. Oh, nearly forty years, um, I've been with the firm for thirty, and we specialize in financial institutions. Um, so this is pretty much all we do. Um. And Santander has been a great customer and client of ours for probably the last five years. Um, we've been doing a lot of work for them. And I'm pleased to say this is a new prototype building um, that has been developed, uh, not, not entirely by us. It's actually a, uh, the prototype is developed by a national. Architectural firm they use, and then uh, the local architects in the case of DRL. Take it and get it to work with the um, the, the specific site and 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 program that's needed for, for that location. So, um, so I'll just start with the, the uh, the, the pretty pictures, um, so you can get a sense of what the building looks like. We have one from. From each direction. Uh, can everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is taken from the other direction, looking down, and we, we didn't get into modeling the existing uh, buildings that, that, that were down there, but you can see the, the. The landscape and the future bike uh, trail i- in the back. Um, I'll jump to the plan just to give you some um, a better orientation of how, how it's laid out. Um, as, as Bob mentioned, it's a one-story, twenty-five-hundred square bit, uh, square foot building. Um, slab on grade, its entrance faces Main Street. Um. It does have a side entrance into the same vestibule area off the, you know, that's, that's facing the parking, and that would become the primary. Um, ATM entrance for after hours. You can see there's a, there's a gate here that, that um, rolls down and and just creates a separate. Or a, an enclosed ATM vestibule for after hours. Um. And then the perimeter is, is designed about, there's a little more than two-thirds of the space, um. Maybe even three-quarters of the space is designated to the banking operations. You can see there's a series of offices. Um, banking transaction area and a uh, safety deposit area. Um, ATM room and back of house areas are at the back of the building. Along with a emergency egress that goes out towards the uh, Richardson Street side. Um. The, the elevations, uh, the, the materials, I should say, the combination of um, a brick, you know, a brick veneer. Along with um, a metal Lucabond type panel, um, metal panel that system that they use. All of the glazing is aluminum storefront. Um. The Lucabond actually is, as you saw in the rendering, there's two, two colors. There's the, the gray color that wraps around the. The roof edge, and then there's some accents in their, their marketing, you know, their, their standard corporate color. Um, that's the, that's the gist of it, I should say. Um, I'll get a little bit more specific. If you look at the side elevation here. Between the rear, which is this column line one and column line two, there's a lower roof here that it drops down, and that's where we, we place the mechanical equipment. So that it's not seen. Uh, the back of the building actually has a, a um. A mechanical type screen that, that allows for venting and prevents a bathtub type effect on the roof. Um, so. Um, it's a very forward-thinking building that um, the bank feels reflects uh, the, the, the service they wanna. Provide for the community and their customers, and um. Uh, I think that pretty much sums it up. I'd be happy to take any questions, or if you want me to get into any more specifics as far as the, the building system.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Any comments or questions, board members? Architectural aspects?
This is a, like a same prototype that you use in other places?
It is. This is um.
It's kind of cut and paste.
Um, yeah, it hasn't actually been, this is, is a brand new, so um, we've only, this would be the first one, I should say. We, we've been approved in another town. Just last week. Um, so yeah, we're, we're happy to say they're finally, finally gonna be rolling these out.
So the style, the colors, the brand is part of this new template or model?
Exactly, exactly.
Um, did you do the one in Gloucester?
We did. That was not the prototype. That was a, a, an, you know, an existing building that was infilled.
Yeah, okay. Similar, similar type of gate coming down and things like that, though, so I've seen some similarities.
Yeah, very similar program on the, on the interior.
Yeah.
There's no wiggle room, obviously, understanding that, you know, the red is their corporate color, but even just the brick and stuff like that. They're not looking like, nothing is that.
There's wiggle room.
Uh, there's.
Oh, well, yeah, there's wiggle room approval or not, yeah, definitely, but I, I, the, there's nothing that, that color, that style. And that, I mean, directly across the street is another brick building that's not even close to that.
Yeah, I think what they found with the, the color studies is, you know, the, the red, which, yes, that's their corporate color. They, they, obviously. They're not gonna go away from that, um, but they found that the gray works best with that. Um. And and I, I certainly could improve on this rendering. There, there's actually some red that's actually inside also. Um, that's not seen, that also kind of uh contrasts with the gray, so it, it, you know, that is a little, it's a little more balanced, but you're just not seeing it in the rendering. Um, I think the studies that, that they, they did on the color selections was that the, the more traditional red bricks clashed with their, their corporate color. I think that's why they. Um, prefer to avoid them.
And the same time, there, sign on the left side there is white?
Yes, yes.
On the building.
Yep, the letters would be uh, freestanding letters. In fact, it's on both sides. It's the same side, uh, same size. Um, I actually have the sizes if you wanna see those. Um, and it's all, all um, halo lit lettering, so there's, there's the, the, the three that you see in the renderings, and then the flame, the logo at the top.
All right, so I think, I think it would be in, important going forward. I mean, that's kind of the first building you see coming into town. And I think it would be very important to show a rendering of what comes after it. Because it doesn't look like any thought was given whatsoever as to. How it fits into the town.
That's where I was going with the color.
Uh, to the lef- to the left of the building, there, there's, there's, there's. Um, stores, commercial space, just something that makes it look like it, they thought about it being in Wakefield Center.
Yeah, this is, this is what you have. This is, you can see this, correct?
Yep.
So this is the building that would be raised, and then these are the buildings that are after, um, and.
Um, we can't see it, Tom.
Can't see any of it.
We, we.
Oh, you can't.
And we're, we're still seeing the um, your elevation of the new bank.
Um, all right, sorry about that.
Yeah, there you go.
You may have only shared that one file instead of your screen or something.
Yeah, I think I did. There we go.
Brian, do you have the landscaping scheme?
I do. I'll let Tom finish. I was gonna bring that up.
So this is, can you see it now?
Yes.
Yeah. So. I'm not, um. I don't wanna be too critical of, of what's, what's there, but I, I know, I know what, what, whoops, happened there. I know what Bob's intention is as far as designing something that's, that's new and um. You know, also forward-thinking with this, with this other development, um, but it's hard to kind of project what that. Building might be or what any other, you know, revital, revitalization might, might be. Um, but I, I think it, it certainly um. Is, is similar in character and, and, you know, design as the uh, the new complex across uh, Richardson Street.
And I'm thinking even too, like the McDonald's, we just had that updated over there. It kind of goes well, I think, with that. I like the colors of it.
Well, the, the uh Bennett Street building has some gray in it to, to correspond with the gray. That's in the, in your junior high school too, so, you know, the color palette is within the range of the, of the current neighborhood at the same time.
And Greg, to your, to your point earlier, um, with their corporate colors, they came back. I'm gonna say, two years ago, it might have been three years ago, uh, with a whole signage package for the center of town. Uh, of which we approved none. And then they came back with their secondary color palette, which they would also be happy with, which we approved, so. Nothing set in stone.
No, understood, yeah.
If we, if we hate the red, we hate the red, but if you like, I, it doesn't, kind of in this situation, it doesn't bother me, because it bothered me on a historical building. On this building, it doesn't bother me quite as much.
I think I'm just thinking of it as, kind of as Mike said, it is the entrance to town, and the mix of just. Gray to make the red stand out is an extremely corporate. Um, you know, so I think it's not in paste, and it does nothing for. You know. Oh, welcoming to town, hey, here's a chain. Or I should say welcoming to downtown, hey, here's a chain, especially if we have a McDonald's right next to it. So I think. Uh, Amy, that almost makes it worse for me. We already have a chain right there. I mean, not right next to it, but pretty cool.
Well, we can't keep small businesses open because people refuse to shop at them, so we're gonna have bigger corporate things like this, so.
It, I, I don't mind having them here, but it still can look better than it's just there. Hey.
But this is, but this is, the, the thing is that this end of town is dead. Sweet Bay has finally moved down there, basically, and they doubled their business. With, with this showing up, basically, it's gonna draw more people down to this end of town, put some pressure on the town to really do something down this end. I can guarantee you, Sweet Bay is gonna love having this next door to it, because there'll be people basically that will watch over the Sweet Bay, so. You know, it's, it, this is the end of town. This has needed a lot of help ever since it's moved in.
Because I think we can even kind of sure, I'm not against Santander coming here. I'm not saying that. But just because it's Santander, I don't think that you could say your building's great and move on.
Oh, no, I, you know, it, like Chip already mentioned, basically, the fight for downtown, for the building downtown, I was in the middle of this one here. I, I, I don't mind it. It gives a little, it gives a little oomph to downtown.
It freshens it up.
And we'll see what comes next door, and and to be honest. The ones next to that could use some work, but.
Well, I've talked to the tree of butters going up the street, actually four butters. Yeah. And um, we can't do anything, but, you know, we have a mind to try and improve. Piece by piece, that's it.
Yep, and this is a start. It's a corner, corner lot.
Yeah.
Very visible presence.
Just to get this going in that area.
Yeah.
And it's not multi-mixed, uh, you know. Development with residential and, so it makes development, it's just pure commercial marketing tale.
Yep.
Make a checkbook, Bob.
Okay, any other comments, questions on the architecture for now? We can move on.
This is a landscape plan that uh, Tom just put up, that we've hired, uh, Jim Emanuel, who you're familiar with, and.
Mm hmm.
Jimmy has put this together. Everything will be irrigated.
Did you say he's here tonight or not?
No, I, I, oh, I think this is, there's not a lot of room for landscaping here, but it's certainly gonna be an improvement, and I said to Jim, I don't think you need to come tonight, and. And if the board has comment on it, we can bring it to the next meeting, but um, I don't think I need to keep him up yet till. Ten thirty.
No, understood. Just didn't know if he was lurking.
Krista Tabell has issues with it. We will hear, and I'll tell Mr. Emanuel exactly what to do.
Bigger caliper, more. No, I, Jim, yeah, Chip.
No, I mean, Jim, yeah, Chip, or others, if you look at the planning schedule, and any comments, we can raise them up and have a deeper discussion.
Which we will.
Yep. But it looks a good opportunity along the borders. Just think about snow, obviously.
Yeah.
Maybe as part of that easement because you're going to be pushing snow somewhere, not on the rail trail.
This will be a ground lease?
No, that's correct. Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Go ahead, Bob.
No, it's not a ground lease. I'm building the building and leasing it to them.
Bob will, Bob will maintain ownership of the building. It's really a building lease, Mike. Okay. It seems reasonable putting putting some landscape where the islands, the strip along Richardson up front. And did the visual represent it when you were showing the front elevation, side elevation? Because we want to assure that those renderings are, those should show the actual landscape. So we would look for them to be.
They don't, we 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 had the rendering done. I mean, the the locations and and where we're showing them do, but the renderings are not representative of what the landscaping is because we had it done before the landscape plan, but.
Brian, I see a, I see a mistake on the site plans.
Okay, so just to close on this though, Tom, you you understand, we just look for that consistency. I don't know if you've been before us before, but in the end, we will want, and there might be updates to the landscape plan. We'll just want the the planes to be in sync. So what we see visually here does represent what's on the landscape. So they all sort of tie in. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Good chip.
Yeah, I have a problem with the site plans. There's a typo. All of the curb seems to be betuminous, something bit, bit something.
Yeah, betuminous.
Betuminous? Yeah, that should be, I think, three different initials. Granite vertical, it's usually GVC. We don't let any buildings go in town without granite curving, just FYI.
Where, where is, oh, hold on.
Just all the curve. It's not bit, bit, bit. Yeah, no, it's vertical granite curving.
BGC.
BGC. Just so you know. The standard we have in town for any new construction. That's all. Just we'll deal deeper in it when we talk about site and all your other stuff. But just so you know, going forward.
Good catch, Chip. Thanks.
That's the first thing I look for.
Besides, I didn't even notice on the irrigation plan, but I'm sure there's a note somewhere that said it'll all be irrigated.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on there.
And they just missed the curving, that's all.
No, fine. But that's the other one. It's like we we hone in on. But they have to be there. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Brian, were there other slides, chip, plans? No, I don't have any, anything else. I think Tom did a good job. I think we've given a good layout. Bob, Bob, in, I told you, we're waiting to hear from TAC. And we've heard your comments. Bob, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think we covered what we know so far.
I do, too. Yeah. So Brian, just just on the on the parking, what, do you know what the the requirement is? It's ten and we have eleven, I believe. Okay, based on the use and make square footage and.
Yes. And you use?
Yeah, one, one space for two, every 250 square feet.
Ten required, providing eleven.
Eleven, we have Bob or ten parking. Can you, Tom, can you go back to the site plan for a minute?
I think it was eleven.
It's eleven.
Yeah, I think it's eleven.
Yep, eleven.
I thought, okay, so I didn't want to misrepresent it. And that's, front one's a handicap. Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions, board members for this initial presentation? Okay. Um, yeah, so we got the DPW letter. We'll we'll want to hear your comments because some updates to plan, some might be ultimately conditions, perhaps. Concom. Not within their jurisdiction, will not require a permit. However, the commission recommends that the applicant adhere to good housekeeping practices during the execution of the project. So you've got that right, Brian? I think you got coffee. Get those. I'll get them from Gail this week. Don't be. As far as, as far as, if I can just add, Mr. Chair, the only other thing I did want to mention and is that, you know, as far as zoning goes, is there's basically 100% compliance in the business district. No lot area is required. This has 11,245 square feet. Frontage requirement is 40 feet. We have 111. FAR is 1.5. This is 0.21. There's no, there's no setbacks in the business district. We are setback, as a matter of fact, pretty significantly in in some of them. Number of stories, we only have one story. And the height in the business district is 60 feet. This is only 17 feet. Lot coverage is only 21.5% out of 80% allowed. Yep, sounds good. I just saw that in the file. And we haven't seen any other correspondence from the boards at this time, usually the fire department or and engineering. Obviously, you've heard from the DBW, so. Okay. Unless there's anything else, board members, at this time, we can roll up the public testimony if anyone from the public has a comment or question. You can raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, and I'll call on you in order. Not seeing hands go up, so I'll close it to public testimony for the evening. Again, we'll be continuing and getting into various you are in more detail, so there'll be other opportunities.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I know usually we go on and on, but this is pretty simple, right? It's 1,700 square feet. It's not a big building. It's a pretty basic lot and it's corporate. What what are, I mean, we have to get the other things answered. We have to talk about architecture. We have to talk about landscaping. But I don't see breaking this out into 10 more meetings. Right? I think we can do a lot of it all in the same meeting. Like if they answer the, I mean, what what other question? We're not really redesigning. We may talk about signage a little bit. We may talk about colors a little bit, but, you know, we're really not, there's not a whole lot here to discuss once questions are answered. So how do you want to move forward to? You know, I'd like to just do, you know, answer the engineering questions, landscaping, traffic, kind of all in the next, and a little bit of architecture, but people didn't really jump up with a whole lot of objections tonight. I mean, in my opinion, we don't need to drag this out a whole long time.
Oh, we will only do what we need to do, but.
But that's why I'm saying, what do we want to do for the next meeting? You know, usually we cover one subject a night. There's just not that much to cover here.
Want to come back with everything.
I think it's all traffic and traffic flow. I think that's the big one. They got to get to TAC. I want to hear what they say about driveway location.
So do we not want to meet again until they've done that? That's where I'm going. Where, you know, what's, 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 what are people's concerns?
So Brian, do you think you can get the DPW? I mean, we could have a meeting in two weeks if you had all the response, because the DPW had a four-page letter with 22 comments. They got to respond to some of those, so we might want to talk about that. And and any architectural updates, any landscape update, you know, details. So we could cover a few things in one meeting. It's just whether we're ready to do traffic. I think, well, it depends on when, that we're going to be able to get before the TAC. And and I would bet that we will be before them, before your next meeting. Lieutenant Anderson is very responsive always, and he said he was going to get us on as soon as he could. So, and that was, that was two weeks ago. So I would expect we're going to hear from him any day.
I will note also, just to mitigate any issues, basically, this is not in the overlay district.
Really?
That's right. It's not in the overlay district. It's going to be handled similar to the the storage building on Water Street. And I suspect since it's got signage.
Does this go under the old sign by law?
Yes. So I suspect the signage on Main Street, the signage on on the side street and signage toward parking probably are all legal as long as they meet the size requirements.
But then we have all parking lot directional stuff to look at and anything else they might want to add.
Yeah, but it's, but it's not hamstrung by the overlay district.
Okay.
So Brian, is there a sign package or a sign plan that you can show us? We will soon. Yeah, I mean, Tom went through it briefly, but we do have a, we do have a sign package. We do have a sign plan. Why don't we, why don't we go to that? Quickly, Tom?
Not tonight.
No? Okay. You can tie it, Mr. Tabo.
Yeah.
Well.
I get up in the morning.
Tommy, Brian? Just give the name of the Sign Consultant Company. We have a Sign Consultant Company, we're a lighting consultant company. And I read that thing we got from DBW. There's nothing on there that would take even two weeks for us to work out with the DBW and get done. The only thing, we do everything by right with the exception of the drive-through, and we have a traffic advisory report that Brian maybe will resolve that in the next week. We'll get back in two weeks and perhaps get some answers. So, like, your member suggested, get something moving in a, in a working go direction.
We'd like, we'd like to be back in two weeks and and we'll see what we can cover. And it sounds like we can potentially cover a lot in a yes, you know, maybe not a long period of time. And we'll see if, at that point, if we think we're in a good spot or we just need to continue because there's something else that comes up at that time, but.
Well, I'd ask, I'd ask if they do have a sign package, which it looks like they do, is send it ahead so that I can look at it basically and tell you whether, how compliant or not compliant it is with the old code.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And I would suggest that they should also look at it and see how compliant they are or not as well. We shouldn't do all their work.
Well, you got to understand, Mr. Tabel, Mr. McBain and I usually don't agree on that, so as you know, and he usually wins, so I'd rather have him tell me where we're not compliant.
And also want to maybe start looking at an O and M plan, too.
Okay, so the punch list just gets longer, but yes, potentially, we could get a lot covered in the next meeting if if all this stuff gets gets worked offline. All right.
Great.
Anything else?
Thanks, you, Ken. We will move quickly.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Chip?
Thank you, everyone.
I mean, that we continue this hearing to our January 27th meeting.
Second.
Yeah, we did, and it already closed. There were no hands raised. Yeah. Any discussion? Chip?
Nope.
Amy? Thank you.
Whatever.
Amy?
What?
How do you want to vote on the motion?
I already did that, sorry, yes.
The thing you seconded a few minutes ago?
That was my vote.
I know, it's getting late. Hang in there, hang in there. Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. All right, we're continuing for the evening. Thanks for the presentation tonight. We'll see you in two weeks. All right, moving right along. Next new hearing, 21-32 and 33, James F. Hutton and Joan H. Hutton at 111 Greenwood Avenue. Welcome back, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
He deserve a gold badge tonight. He's been on since the beginning.
And we appreciate your patience. We just take them in order. Crowd, the crowd shrinks as the night goes on, right?
Yeah.
For the record, attorney Brian McGraw representing James F. Hutton and Joan H. Hutton, regarding their property situated at 111 Greenwood Avenue in Wakefield. Jim is with us tonight, as you just recognized. Also, Peter Sandus is the architect. And Ryan is here also. Ryan is involved with with Jim on the property. So I'm going to move right along. Property is at 111 Greenwood. This is, I got the wrong one. Hold on.
You had it there, Brian, first.
Now, this is, this shows a proposed addition. Yeah, I want to find. Just bear with me, folks. For some reason, I attached the wrong one. Well, does a board have the plan that I submitted?
I do.
Because I can probably just cut to the chase on this instead of searching this. Basically, this is, this is a site plan. And what what the Huttons are proposing is to put in addition the properties at 111 Greenwood Avenue. That's relatively small lot. It has 30 feet of frontage. It only has 2,700 square feet. And it has a, you know, a reasonable house built on it. What they're, what they're looking to do is, in this area where the proposed addition is, they currently have a deck. It's almost exactly the same size, and they're looking to take down the deck, and they're looking to put what I would call a modest addition on the back to increase the living area in the relatively small home. If you look at the zoning table, as far as, there's two things that they're requesting. They're requesting a finding, which is typical because we have a non-conforming house in a non-conforming lot that we're adding on to. So we were asking for a finding, and we're also asking for a variance. And, you know, it's pretty interesting that the the significance of the variance, because when you look at the zoning table, lot area isn't changing. Frontage isn't changing. Front setback remains the same. Side setback on the left remains the same. On the right remains the same. The rear, we're going a little bit closer, but we're well within compliance of the 25 feet at 35.8. Number of stories is remaining at 2.5. Height, no relief needed. The lot coverage, because it's a small lot, is a request for the variance. So the allowed in the single residence district is 30%. It's currently at 29%. We're, we're going to go over a little bit, it's 34.4 needed. So we need a variance for the lot coverage in addition to the finding. Minimum open space is is complied with. That's not changing. So, so basically, that is the relief that we're seeking for variance. I can get into the standards on that, but I think the board might want to see what we're proposing for an addition. So I'm going to let Peter, if you could. Hold on, Brian, sorry. Before you leave the table, so just a couple anomalies. I'm just not sure if I'm getting it right. So the frontage row says required 100, existing 100? The existing is 30, right?
Thirty.
Yeah, that's a Paul Finocchioism. Okay. Yeah.
You wish it became 100.
Yeah. Okay, so that that really should say 30 because you're not changing it. And the, and the left side, the right side setback, the back of the new proposed addition is 5.7, so doesn't that become the right side setback, not 6.2? See the top of the proposed additions as far.
Let me.
Well, it looks like those numbers are flopped, too.
Because one.
Yeah, they popped backwards. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll get Paul to correct the table. Okay. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know that it's going to change our position on this. No, it needs to be correct. I, I, I thank you for bringing that up. I didn't see that Paul made that error, so. Couple of things that I noticed, that's all. Okay. Yep. Oh, they're they're big notices. And when Peter's presenting, Peter, do you, can you bring yours up on the screen, Peter? Do you need me to do it?
If you do it, that'd be great.
I can do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on. All right. And the lot coverage increases because the porch doesn't count, but the.
No, the porch is getting taken off and the additions going in.
It was, it was the deck, guys.
The deck doesn't count. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly.
Okay, Pete? What do you want me?
You can stay there. These, these are the post changes. You can see the just make sure I'm looking right. Yeah. I mean, really, the basic, the main reason for this addition is to get that master bedroom in the back to be functional up on. up on the second floor. And you can see it there with the bed. If you go down one level below it, we're we're putting a playroom behind the dining area and the existing bath, showing a small landing and a set of stairs down. And then the first to the left, the first plan is the foundation plan. But really, what Brian said is true. We're taking what was the existing deck and saying, remove that, come back in in pretty much the same footprint. Create a new, a real foundation and on top of that place a playroom and on top of that, extend what is a very small bedroom and make it a functioning master bedroom. That's the intent. Brian, do you have the, will you be able to?
Only this screen quite yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm looking at the dates on this. And I don't want Paul Finocchio to be the only one thrown under the bus tonight. Do you want to tell me how we got to two thousand thirty so quickly?
Well, you know, these things happen during the pandemic.
I mean, I know we wanted to get rid of twenty twenty. I get that.
Exactly.
Thirty is a little bit of a stretch, but Peter.
Yeah, I agree. So I'm actually looking at a plan with a rendering that's dated twelve, ten, twenty.
So why do we have eleven thirty, thirty?
Who's the president?
I sent you that one, did I?
Brian, if you want, I can pull up the the zoning board packet. I have it open. I think that's what Peter, I think that's what you're looking at and what we had submitted.
I am. Thanks. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
Let me stop sharing here. Hold on.
The plans you sent us are so small, I can't see it. No, the the plans you sent us are the same ones you were sharing.
That's right. So what happened on this, I think Pete, I I think Peter, actually, your your plans are dated after I filed because we I was in a, we were in a real rush to get this filed for the Huttons because they wanted to get going on their.
Oh, yeah, this is twelve, ten, twenty.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We're back in in real more real time.
Yeah, I think I think, Mr. Chair, these plans you're seeing tonight, Peter, can you get Gail a hard copy set of these tomorrow?
Yes.
Because these these are going to be your official plans for architecture.
Okay, so I'm I'm using a date of twelve, ten.
Correct. Correct.
Right. So rendering of the, because the addition is in the back, there's a rendering of the rear elevation, showing the slider to the to the small back landing down to the to the grade. The windows in the playroom and then the windows up in the bedroom above. Steve, you can scroll to the next slide. And this is the the site plan. We we just made it a little more graphic, and this is talking about what Brian talked about, the square footage and the need for the fact that we're going over the allowable lot coverage. Design number, Steve, can you read it? Does our number agree? Or is it still what we talked about? I see the six point two there. See what I'm talking about, Steve? Where where the addition pinches? I think what Paul's showing is the distance from the lot line to the addition.
Right, Pete, I'm going to pull up Paul's existing conditions plan. When you when you're done, I'll have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is proposed site plan. We're showing the addition pinched. So we actually make it better. We're pulling the addition in a little bit.
The five point seven?
Yes, yep. Uh, go ahead, Steve. You can go to the next slide.
Yeah, one's, yeah, the one with the table is not.
And 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 I think these just, this is easier to read because we're showing existing house in in shaded area and then the addition and the renovation in in white. But it's what for new foundation, the new playroom and the expanded master bedroom. And Steve, you can go to the next one. And here is the, it's a bungalow style house. The front doesn't change. The left and right elevation show the addition and renovation. Steve, I see two fronts. I don't see a rear, I don't think. But that's okay. It's you. You can see the renovation, the addition in the right and left elevations, how it projects to the back. And then this plan shows us the existing conditions with the existing deck, set of stairs down, the existing second floor, the small bedroom on the right and the existing foundation.
Although this, to me, is a pretty simple thing, it seems like we got a lot of housekeeping to take care of to get.
Yeah, we'll clean up.
Both from you and Paul.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let me, um,
I don't think we should penalize the Huttons for that.
Correct, we can.
I have a, this this will help a little bit. Pete, can you stop sharing with us? Thanks.
Yep.
This is this is the existing condition plan on the deck. So it it's currently, the house is currently six point two.
Right.
All right. That's that's that. Okay, and then so now let's go back to the.
And the addition is five feet seven.
Yeah, but I I.
Indented a little. It looked like.
I don't want to make a mistake on this. So let's, yeah.
That's what I have in front of me in the packet.
No, no.
It was the next screen. It's confusing because the addition is the same size as the deck.
I made Paul, Paul, you know, in he's not here, so I can blame him. Um, but there's a there's a mistake, right? The addition, the addition actually goes closer. So that needs to be part of the part of the finding. Okay. Uh, but when when Paul did the did the chart here, he said it wasn't going to go closer. See it? It doesn't look like it does go.
Doesn't look like it.
It does go closer, but it so that this chart is wrong. He says existing six point two feet. Okay, which is correct.
At the house.
At the house, at the house.
Then the addition becomes five point seven.
Yeah, so I mean,
closer.
Now, Peter, does the addition go up beyond the house?
It does not. It's pinched in, but I think what's happening, looking at the six point three in the front and the six point two, that line that looks straight must taper in.
It's got to be. Or the house might be jockeyed a little bit.
Yeah, some something is up there.
Yeah, because this is three point five and that's three point three point four. So I think.
Yeah.
And that's six point three. I think the house is jockeyed a little bit. So is it is you go back further with the addition, it gets closer to the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
If you if you go look at the other side, it gets further away.
Yeah, it's four instead of three point.
Usually, we don't know what's wrong.
Is it? No, that makes sense because it's closer here, it gets further here, and the further you go back, the further away it gets on this side. On this side, the further back you go, the closer it gets.
Oh, I actually think it's a typo because if you look at the left side, it's three and a half feet. The proposed addition and the deck footprint that's there is pinched in six inches on each side. So if you look at the back of the proposed addition on the left, it's four feet from the setback. So I think where it says five point seven feet, it actually should be six point seven feet. Because it's pinched in six inches. So if you add half a foot to six point two, it should be six.
So so I think I think, Jim, are you there? Jim Hutton?
I sure am.
Yeah, so I think what we gotta do, we gotta get this right. It's critical for you that this is right. I think what we need to do is continue this just for two weeks so we can get Paul to clean this plan up and get these numbers accurate because we can't have the board give us but we can't request of the board relief that's inaccurate. It's going to cause a problem for us.
I think what you hear from the board is I think we're okay with this point, you know, with with what you're proposing to do. I don't think the board has any concerns with the what you're proposing to do. It seems reasonable. It's just we got to get the numbers right so that we're granting the proper relief because the variance runs with the land. And we just, we got to make sure we're granting the right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. I I know it's a very unique lot. At the end of the day, my goal is to have my son and his family stay in the Greenwood neighborhood with their growing family. And I would very much appreciate your favorable consideration. We'll clean this up and whatever we need to do uh, from a surveying standpoint.
And on the on the architectural plans.
And and on the plan as well, right? I'll I'll work with Peter's team on that as well.
Yeah, and we'll and we'll get in touch with Paul tomorrow as well so that we all have the numbers that relate.
Yeah. The other thing I want to add is, you know, I know the board always likes to know how the neighbors feel and so the Huttons approach all the direct abuters to the property. And I'll get this to Gail for the record. They have all signed a statement of support of of the project and requesting the board to give the relief.
Could I also suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we let the Huttons go first and continued hearings in our continued hearing? Because I don't think anybody for this type of thing should have to sit through our meetings another another time.
Thank you, Mr. Tabo. It has been an education, I will say.
Not without some combat pay. Okay, no, that's that's a reasonable accommodation. I think we can do that.
We're thrilled to move forward and we are very happy to stay in Wakefield, both us moving back from Florida for our grandchild and my husband and his wife and new family staying in the green field Greenwood section. We're very thrilled at this prospect. Thank you.
Okay. Welcome back. Thank you. Just for the record, correspondence, just DPW had no comments at this time. That letter was dated January sixth. And then December eighteenth, CONCOM sent us a letter stating for the record that this project doesn't fall within the jurisdiction. But just asking that any project is done. And here's the good housekeeping practices during the execution. So those are the two letters we received from other boards. Other than that, anything else, board members for tonight? Okay, once again, we'll open up the public testimony. If there's any member of the public who wishes to ask a question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Not seeing any hands go up. We will close with the public testimony for the evening.
May I propose that we continue this till January twenty seventh? To be the first, to be the first continued hearing on January twenty seventh.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All favorite, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim? All right, you're on mute. Thumbs up. Thank you. Tom Lucy?
Yes.
Mike Feeley?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, thanks for your patience tonight. We'll see you in two weeks. At or about seven PM or maybe seven oh five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Have a good night. You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's all the official hearings for the evening. I know we have a couple other matters to cover, including a administrative relief request from T-Mobile. So Brian, while you're here.
Yeah.
Do you have both of these? Let's see.
No, I have sixty nine Foundry.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
Two ninety one Salem?
That's not going to go forward. We're not ready. We just that Gail was kind enough to put that on the agenda just in case they were ready with their with their new drainage report, but.
Okay. So next time, not ready.
Maybe I'm.
Maybe, okay, but not tonight. All right. So the next one relates to seventeen.
Dave, can I ask you a question about this Salem Street?
Quickly.
Yeah. Um, there's a survey that was given to us supposedly an Asbilly survey. And it's just a bunch of spot grades. It doesn't, it it's very difficult to read in comparison to the original documentation. I suggest basically whoever did the survey, connect all the grades basically just like they were on the original set. So we can actually see what the heck's going on.
And why do it now? We're going to need another one after they fix the drainage. So as far as I'm concerned, what they sent us is useless.
Well, it's certainly useless in my mind because I can't, I I'm not going to spend.
For two reasons. It's not what it's not the app. They've got a it's not going to be the as-built of the finished product project. So don't waste our time with it. Brian?
Yeah, what we want, what we want to do is give you a proposed plan in in that it shows the changes and then it will be built according to the proposed plan.
And then you would give us a
as-built.
bill signed up by an engineer that it was done correctly.
If you approve the change, who knows if you will.
Right, but I'm just saying to get the as-built now means nothing.
Because we know it's not built according to the.
Correct, correct. It's like useless information.
Well, then the survey for what they propose to do better have some grades and lines on them.
Yeah.
So we really can understand what the hell they're doing. I'm not, I'm not happy with this group.
Understood.
New Street?
I hope so.
Okay. You tried once. Yeah.
All right, seventeen dash thirty nine forty and forty one. This goes back ways. Sixty nine Foundry Street, Malanson Development Group. We're going to discuss some modifications.
Yeah, so I think I can. Um, Jim, Jim, I'm going to need your help on this. Jim, just to give the board some background, Foundry Street project is getting very close to completion. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. Jim and I met at the site last week. He's the board liaison for the project. We walked the site with Tim Sullivan, the project superintendent. Walked around the building. I thought it was a good site visit. I think the building looks great. I think it fits in great. There's there's a few things that Tim Sullivan, the project super is very diligent and he brought some issues up to Jim that he thought needed to be discussed and clarified. Um, we we, after a site visit, we met for approximately two hours. We went through all of the modifications that the board has approved throughout this project to make sure that they were all reconciled. And we're going to put that into a master document to document them all. Um, and I thank Gail Conroy because Gail's minutes were meticulous on this. Unbelievable that really provided us the playbook to follow along, didn't miss one beat on what happened for the life of this project and made our job that day so much easier. So thank you to Gail and the, I think, you know, everything is spot on. There's a few changes or maybe additions that we talked about. I I quite frankly, thought Tim would be on tonight. Um, Jim, didn't you think he was going to be on? I think he might have forgot about the meeting.
Or fell asleep.
Fell asleep. But in any, in any event, I think we're we're pretty organized and 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 maybe we, I hope we can make some headway. Um, so I'm going to try to do that. And I'm sure Jim will be able to help, I hope. Okay, so.
Brian, when are you going to be looking for occupancies?
Um, I think early February, Chip.
So what are we going to do about landscaping?
We're going to be back. There's other stuff that's probably going to need to be bonded. So we're going to be back at the next meeting with a with a list to talk to the board about that.
And you guys are going to come up with a number or you're going to give me the list first and I'll come up with a number?
Either or. Probably give you a list and have you come up with a number.
Okay.
Instead of playing a game, I'd rather you just be comfortable.
Well, I mean, easy, either way, I mean, you can either show me the number you come up with and give me the list to document that.
Yeah.
Why don't you do that and propose? And if I
That's fine.
Feel like it's not enough, we'll tell you.
Okay. So can you guys see my, can you see my email here?
Yes.
Okay, so we've kind of listed the items to keep on track. And Jim, I'm going to ask for your help on this. So the first thing is, there's an intermediate shot post on the rail system. Um, and we want to, the the elevations, which I'll bring up, showed it colored green. And we want to change it to black.
This is, this is what we went back to is the renderings that were produced as part of the materials list, basically.
There it is, Jim. I got it.
And what they, for some reason or other, the rendering basically shows the palings in between the railings basically green on the on the balconies, when in fact, the whole railing system is really black.
Fine.
So it's, you know, it's it's stupid stuff, but um, just want to make everybody aware of it. Now, now the posts on either side are green. The railing system that's installed is all black, including the intermediate intermediate posts.
These posts.
Yes.
Because it looks like the top rail is even green.
Yes. Yes, but they're all black.
Yeah, okay.
And, and you know.
And you can see in the rendering, you can see the next one over basically is black.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just cleaning this up. But the other thing is that the. The posts at the bottom under the, under the decks basically is black from the ground up and then green from the way up the rest of the way.
Yeah, and you know, kudos to the Seaver who's building it because they were on this and noticed it and Jim and Amy, because Amy's been, you know, the board liaison of this project too, so. You know, really, really into the details. So that was, that's number one. Number two. Let me see here. Okay, Jim, the corner entry columns, we submit clarification. The round columns at the corner entries will be painted white instead of gray.
Well, they, they, it, it looks like they're. Like a purple or something like that. Again, it's the rendering or the printing, basically. They all need to be white and these are the entry columns at the, to the building, basically. I don't, I'm not sure you're gonna find it in there.
It might not be in this one, Jim?
No.
Okay.
Unless on the first one, in the first picture.
Yeah, maybe you can kind of see him. Yeah, these columns, they are. Yep, see how they kind of look gray in the rendering? Yep. So, you know, again, wants to make sure they comply. They're saying, well, it, it really was just a color. We wanna confirm that the board wants these to be white.
And they should be white.
Okay.
All right. Two.
Does matches gray suit.
All right. But is it on a plan anywhere else that says white? It just rendered gray? Or is this the only place where this color would?
They, they, this is, this is the problem. There are some pla- there are, there's a lack of information in the drawings. If you look at some of these things.
Okay.
Went looking for elsewhere, so. You know, it's, it's no bit, like I say, it's not a big deal. It's just making sure that everything's on record.
Yeah. Okay. Jim, the balcony light fixtures. Um and these are all gonna be on the um, they're gonna bring up in the ground level fixtures.
There were not balcony light fixtures showed and there are some out there, so. Um I don't see any problem with them. But the ones that they're, they've got up installed.
These. We already up, we walked the site and saw them.
Are they plastic? They just look cheap.
No.
They're metal?
They diecast aluminum.
Okay.
It's just the rendering, Chip. No, they look, they don't look plastic.
They still look cheap.
I was being nice. I was saying it was the rendering. Okay. And. Okay, oh landscape plan. Um so. We went, we went through the minutes on the courtyard and. You know, there was modifications done in December of two thousand eighteen.
And we didn't vote on that?
Well, you did, but one thing we just couldn't, and we know, and Jim knows, we know that, that um. That this was discussed. And the changes in the courtyard. But it's just.
The light and everything else.
It's just no reflection in the meeting minutes on this specific item. So, you know, again, we spent a lot of time going through this last week and we just said, you know what, let's just get, you know, we're gonna do a final document. Let's get the board to confirm. That they're okay with this because we don't wanna, he hasn't built the hardscape or anything. He said before he does that, he wants to make sure we're all on the same page.
It was never followed up with basically the final closing of that, even though we discussed it clearly and. It came up, the, this came about because if you remember in the. Right, right hand corner, basically, there was a unit there where in fact. Um it would have been a sitting place right outside somebody's unit. Um so, you know, it changed with, it changed when we changed the design of the building with the new ownership. So this is just a record of what we actually had done and what we looked at. It needs to go in basically as part of the minor modification, previously. Approved but not recorded properly.
Okay. Previously approved, which did we not reference this in the decision, Brian? No, it was just, it was in the minutes that this was done. And then we said we were gonna do a cleanup document at the end for all the changes that were made, which now we have all teed up, but. And we wanted to reconcile those with the minutes, which we did. This is the only plan that we couldn't, we, it wasn't referenced in the minutes. Hmm. And we, we just, again, just wanted to be sure. We said, let's be thorough and just bring it back to the board tonight to make sure we're not making any mistake. Okay. And we know we're not, but again, just so that we wanna have it on the record that it was back here.
Can we discuss it for like an hour?
No.
No.
At least.
All right.
Why are those flowers pink?
And the, the last item, whoops, I almost, I almost exited the meeting.
Try harder.
You guys would have been heartbroken.
Ms. Jones would. She's waiting patiently, so patiently.
The only other item, Jim, that I don't have anything on that you might wanna talk about, just to remind you.
Yeah, at the back, at the back of the building where the emergency generator is. There is a forest of gas meters. Think Bennett Street, and that's what you got back there in a forest. So there needs to be some uh landscape screening back there or something to go on out there.
And how did that get by our collective noses?
They, they did it without it being on a plan.
Yeah.
Where they were going and.
Just like Bennett Street, it got by us there too.
No, we just, you're right, but I thought we did this one afterwards and I'm surprised it got by us again, that we didn't say where are they gonna be and how are we gonna screen them? Yeah. Oh, well.
Jim, should it be landscaping or a fence?
Landscaping.
Do we leave that up to Chip that when we, we'll put, we'll put something together for him to review, because he's gonna be doing, looking at the landscape holdback anyways.
I would say yes, since he's given me so much work, yes, give it to him. Your turn.
Okay.
That's about it.
But do we need to see, do we need to see a plan that shows the landscape? It'll be on a landscape plan?
Yeah, it has to go on the landscape plan.
Okay. So.
I mean, it can be, it can be a cloud.
Yeah.
Just, it doesn't have to, they don't have to redo the whole new.
They can give you a colored pencil, Chip.
Okay, so is that the only one that? I mean, because we can vote, we've got cut sheets of lights. The railing, I mean, I just, can we? Are we in a position to make a consideration that these various things are minor mods, but normally we don't vote for, on a, for a plan we don't actually have yet?
Uh I would not do the landscape. I would do everything but the landscape.
Okay, we can, we can bring that back when we do the uh Bonnie for landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As a, as a minor mod at that point.
So one, one through five tonight and do the landscape later. Yeah. Okay.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that the discussion we just had on items one through five of Brian's email that he shared with us from every, from his email. Um are definitely minor modification and just cleanup issues. Uh and it's appreciated that they went through and actually are at that detail of.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I, I don't have offhand to voted on this, but we'll go with the regular voting members tonight. Uh Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay. So those are, those are done, Brian, and we'll see you in two weeks on the, the landscape. Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna beat up Paul Finocchio tomorrow.
As you should.
Thank you. Have a, have a nice night.
Thank you, Brian.
You guys.
All right. Ms. Jones.
Present.
So patient. So our, our, our last other matter of the evening, ten seventy seven Main Street, T-Mobile. Request for administrative relief to modify an existing wireless communication facility. So welcome and thank you again for your patience, so. Uh do you have something you can share?
Yes, good evening.
Perfect.
Uh, I do, just a moment. Let's see if that. Are you all seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. So just to introduce myself, I'm when I'm with Transend Wireless, I'm a representative for T-Mobile for this particular upgrade project to existing antennas. Uh at this uh location at ten seventy seven Main Street. And we are doing a simple modification to the existing antennas. There's currently nine. Antennas, this is the um view from a bird's eye view. Of the roof plan, as you can see that there are currently installed. Antennas here. And then also in this location. Um, just to go over the antenna plan, this is what's can uh currently installed at that location. At the different sectors. And then this will be. What the final installation. Um as you'll see, we are just uh replacing the current antennas with new antennas to maintain the nine existing. Um antennas in the final plan. And these are for future spots, but we will not be installing antennas at those locations. Um, any new cabling that we're installing um will follow. The current cable trays that you see here. Uh, the only other adjustments that we are making, here is the um, the uh equipment plan. Uh you see the existing equipment plan. We currently have a uh. Uh cabinet that's located here. And then we have a platform over here with two existing cabinets. What we'll be doing is removing this cabinet here. And you can see, we'll be removing it and we'll be uh installing a new non-penetrating. Uh platform. Uh closer to our existing, which will stay there and we'll be putting in two smaller cabinets. Um onto this platform. Again, um, you know, everything will be in line with what is existing, all of our. You know, any new lines, uh we're not upgrading our electrical. We're just using what's existing there and um. I, and here's just a side view. I can give you a side elevation. Just to give you an idea of what the final configuration is. And these are only um. Showing black as uh, as a way to just indicate that those are the new antennas, but they will be white. And fall in line with what is existing.
And that's in the middle is the new equipment cabinet?
Um.
Right there.
That, no, I believe um. It's not called out.
In the previous screen.
Oh, it, it is, yes.
Okay, because you were moving it so that I was gonna have.
But I don't know why it's not called out as particular plans. Um, the cabinet plans, here's the uh platform, the new platform, as you can see that they're not. And then let me see if I can find um. Sorry, here we go. Uh, no.
You said it's non-penetrating. What does that mean exactly?
Um, so there are some platforms that will go into the membrane of the roof. Um and an, and anchor itself to, but this is non-penetrating.
Oh, that's what you mean, okay, just.
Yeah.
On the rubber roof.
Yeah, I just wanna understand the context of that or penetrating like from some. Airflow or signal flow or something from the sides or something, okay.
Yeah. Um, and I'm just seeing, I don't.
So these antennas are gonna maintain the same upper height? So when, it's not gonna stick up higher?
No. It is not going to. Um, right now, the plans that you see here. Where's the, sorry that I'm going all over the place for you guys. Keep you guys awake here. Um, this larger antenna. Um. It, it, it's gonna be. Within the same height of what is currently existing out at the site, so. Everything will be in line with what's out there. Currently, there's, um, I have a picture. It's not a very good picture. I only have the one, but. Um, you can see what is currently out there. There's this uh. Sled mount with a whiteboard to help sort of conceal it and give a stealthing effect to it. But, but they will align here. And painted white. And that's. Basically what's going on.
Okay. Any questions, board, other questions, board members? We're seeing, we continue to see every, every other meeting, every third, fourth meeting. There's a lot of upgrades going on in five G or whatever is uh.
Dave, what I don't see is our letter.
Oh.
Um, it should be included. I included it in the package.
Yeah, no, I have it, but Chip doesn't.
Okay.
I don't have it in our package.
Right, you've just got the application. One second.
Yeah.
And try to. Render that. Any other questions, board members on this? While we stall for time. So, any member of the public wishes to ask a question or like a comment? Twiddling list of other people besides us.
And Mr. Chairman, I can do it. It just, I'm gonna have to say administrative relief, because I don't remember all the numbers that go with it.
Um, one second, I can try to help you.
So should I be concerned? Oh, no, I can't, I can't even do this to you, Whitney.
Oh.
You know, we're the zoning board, not the planning board, right?
Yes, I do.
So the letter to the planning board is just kind of fun for you to. It's, it's addressed to the planning board. Your letter. Your application.
Uh, yes, type up the necessary letter for a signature.
Sure.
Well, it's the best I could do. Can zoom.
All right, Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
Yep.
After.
Go ahead.
I move that we grant. The administrative, based on all the correspondence, plans and materials provided by the applicant. Tonight, I move that we approved in the nine antennas. Being replaced. Uh on top of ten seventy seven Main Street. As well as the two new cabinets on a platform. In accordance. With the plans presented to us from Transend Wireless. Dated December nineteenth. Twenty twenty. For administrative review approval.
That's your motion?
Because they were in compliance.
Oh, he's working on it.
I gotta find. Of, of forty seven USC. One four four five A. Of the administrative review process. For the modification of the equipment. That's my proposal.
Okay, second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just wanna make sure that's the right date. You said something nineteenth, but would the ones that are up say, I think eleven twenty five?
I'm looking at their application.
Okay.
It's presented in the application of December nineteenth. I can do the plans. Dated.
Yeah, no, either one. I thought you said plans.
Uh eleven. Uh, eleven twenty-three? Is that what I'm reading on the stamp?
Eleven twenty-five.
Eleven twenty-five.
Uh, twenty.
Okay. Alright, so your motion has amended referencing the, the date of the plan?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that's unanimous. Um, I've got signed copies, three signed copies of the letter here. And, uh, we can, uh, there will be in the file. We'll get them to Gail tomorrow. Uh, Ms. Jones?
Okay.
And you can work with her to get, I know you need one copy, right, for your own records. But they'll be with Gail in the, in the building department tomorrow.
Amazing, thank you.
You're very welcome. Appreciate again your patience.
Yes, have a great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye. Bye.
Okay. Alright, clerk board comments. Anything, board members? For tonight?
No.
We look like the, um, what's the TV show, The Brady Bunch now?
Minutes? December sixteenth, as expertly written by someone?
Oh, I moved that we, uh, what was it, December, I can't, I wasn't there.
I move that we approve the minutes of December sixteenth.
Second.
Any discussion? Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you again, Gail. Well done. Um. Anything else? Motion adjourns always in order.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Uh, yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Yep.
I leave the meeting, that be it?
Yep. Mike?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes, please, please.
Alright, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you for everyone in your time tonight. Have a good night.
Bye, guys.
Thanks, guys.
See you later.